May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trustee Mason.
Here.
Trustee Teets.
Here.
Trustee Wigan.
Here.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Gator.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McDonald. Mayor Shosse.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any amendments to the agenda this evening? No. Are there any conflicts of interest? No. All right, at this time, we'll move on to item B1, public comment. Individuals wishing to speak, please approach the podium. State your name for the record. This, once again, is for non-agenda items, and you'll be given three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Lisa Cholet, seventy-four twenty-four, Home Stretch Drive. Have not attended any board meetings lately, but like many in our community, I've watched them via Zoom or later on YouTube. From that, what stood out to me and others in my conversations are these words: diversity, suicide attempts, depression, suicide success, veterans, trans teens, two percent, crazy and scared. These words represent what I've heard in these meetings and amongst my neighbors, friends, and fellow parents. This week, we are once again reminded how awful the world can be. I'm gonna get emotional, sorry. As three nine-year-olds and three adults were killed in Nashville. This weekend, Wellington parents waited to see if there was a credible threat to our kids at the middle high school. When last Wednesday, there was an unknown person who gained access to our school. And then again, earlier this week, a threat was called into the safe-to-tell. Fortunately, both of those instances were resolved without any issue. I recount this to you here because it's indicative of the division and animosity we see in this room at times, in our community, and in our world. As the adults in the room, you, me, and all of us, we need to set a better example for our kids and to and to one another. As our elected officials, it's your responsibility to lead. It is your responsibility to set your personal beliefs and your personal wants and opinions aside so that you may lead through the lens of our entire community. I urge you to choose your words carefully when discussing issues. Speak without judgment. Show kindness and respect to those you may disagree with. And I urge all of us to start doing the same. Our children are watching, and if the bullying and disrespectfulness and cruelty they show to one another and their teachers is indicative, we, the leaders, we, the leaders and the adults in the room are failing. We must do better before tragedy knocks on our doors. It's time to start acknowledging and accepting we don't all believe the same, we don't all look the same, live the same, or experience the world the same way. Our experiences are unique to each and every one of us, but shame on us if we believe ours is the only experience that matters. I encourage you to listen to your constituents and not just the ones that you agree with. We all need to start building bridges in Wellington instead of burning the whole place down. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll ask you refrain from clapping and to keep order in this room, especially with it as crowded as it is at this moment. Anybody else like to, uh, there we go.
Your timer's up, Mayor.
Yes, it is.
Karen, I heard I live in the Knowles. I just wanted to get up. I have talked in the past about some of my own disabilities along with my children's disabilities. Next month is Autism Awareness Month. And so we've been in communication with Patty about that and what we can do to help celebrate our children that have autism in our community. And I'd like to let you know that when I do these things, I do it for all of Wellington. If you have a child, if you have a loved one, an adult, I don't care if they're eighty-two or nine-hundred-and-two or if they're five, if you have autism, please be sure to attend the meeting at this location at the Leaper Center at six-thirty on April eleventh, is that right, Patty? Yeah. Because I think that people should be able to celebrate their diversity and celebrate what their abilities are. Because, as we all know, you probably hear me say it all the time, it's not about the disability, it's about the abilities of the person. And with that, I think I've told several of you, I've shown you pictures of my service dog in training. And he is away right now. It's driving me crazy, but he's getting extensive, more tasks learned, so here shortly, within probably, probably the next month, he'll start to show up to these meetings with me. And I know he's cute and gorgeous, but he's mad and you can't touch him, you can't hug him because he's on duty. So please, just respect his space, he's working for me. And I really look forward to being able to hopefully be able to do a little bit more in these meetings and common demeanor with my service dog helping me, but please, if you or anybody you know has autism and lives in the Wellington community, please come to the meeting on April eleventh as we celebrate Autism Awareness Month. And our mayor will be signing a declaration, no proclamation, a proclamation about April being Down Syndrome Awareness Month. That's all.
Thank you.
Please unmute and test, Hallie.
Testing.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, no more further comment. All right, first up is going to be Ms. Lori Stolen. She'll be presenting to us on Larama County's Behavioral Health Services. Welcome, Ms. Stolen, to the podium.
Good evening. Is it working?
I don't, I don't know if they're really that loud tonight.
Okay. If you can't hear me in the back, let me know. Is this a good volume for you all to hear me? Cool, okay. Good evening, Lori Stolen, Larama County Behavioral Health Services Director. I was invited by your town board member, Mr. David Wigan, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and share with you this evening about some updates around the Behavioral Health Initiative. That is a countywide, countywide, including Wellington and the other seven municipalities, as well as our rural and more frontier areas around Larama County. With a point-two-five percent dedicated sales tax to behavioral health, it's twenty years, it started in twenty nineteen, and we have been busy at work putting those dollars back out into the community around Larama County since that time. So if you would let me pause for one second and pull up my presentation, we'll get going with the slides. We're not seeing you. Are you logged in to the meeting?
You may need to accept my invite.
I just did as a panelist. Yeah.
You should be able to share your screen now.
Okay. Okay, there we go. So with this twenty-year ballot initiative, we have three funding pathways that we have created a twenty-year strategic plan in order to distribute these dollars back to the community. And one of them is through a campus that we've recently named the Behavioral Health Services at Longview Campus. And it is located at Taft Hill and Trilby Roads, twenty-two sixty West Trilby Road. We have a dedicated forty acres of land that over the twenty-year initiative, we plan to build out services that would range from acute care, crisis services, the first building that we'll plan to open in December of this year, sixty-four-bed facility. We've contracted out the services to that to Summit Stone Partners. I'll go into that a little bit more in the presentation here. The second building that we are anxiously awaiting to find out from the state if we receive some ARPA funding to fill out the funds that are needed to build an adolescent care facility for our community. I don't know if you know it, but we have over a thousand youth a year that are sent out of county and oftentimes out of state to get the care that they need, and our hopes are that we would build out those services so we can provide the care to those youth in community, support families, support schools, and support those youth that are struggling. The second funding pathway that we have is an annual grant program we call our Impact Fund. This grant program is authorized through our Board of County Commissioners, currently at two-point-eight million dollars a year. Your former mayor, Troy Hammond, was on our Policy Council and helped make some of those decisions. Currently, David is on our Board of our Policy Council and helps make the funding decisions and awards of grants around Larama County to a variety of different behavioral health providers that is intention is to increase awareness and access to affordable and appropriate behavioral health care. That grant program opens in June of this year. Applications are accepted for the month of June, and then we close the grant cycle and we start reviewing the applications, bring them to our Board of County Commissioners after they've been reviewed by our Policy Council, and then make financial awards in the fall of each year. The third funding pathway is a bridge fund, and our plans are to build the structure and the framework for that after the facility opens and we start to learn what the biggest barriers are to people that are leaving care and reintegrating successfully to the community. We're thinking things like transportation, co-pays, deductibles. It might be a variety of different issues around med compliance or affording medications. Our hope is, is that we be able to build a fund that helps support folks in their recovery, in their stability with their mental health or substance use disorder challenges that they're facing. So I talked about that campus, this is sort of a master footprint. And the building in the middle, the largest building, is the first building that we plan to open the acute care. And then we have renderings and some early programming for that adolescent care facility, which is the second building on the right-hand side of that picture. Future expansion includes possibly having partnerships with our housing catalyst, our housing authorities, and creating public, or sorry, permanent supportive housing where we would provide the case managers for folks that needed that longer-term support to maintain their community engagement, to also have training, conference space, and then possibly in the future have primary dental vision for folks that struggle with behavioral health issues that this campus might be beneficial for them. There's pharmacy and lab that will be included, as well as food service in the first building, and that's planned to be able to serve the entire campus once we build that out. Talked a little bit about this already. I want you to know that this is a subdivided parcel of land. We went to the commissioners and we asked, knowing that they serve a four-year term. We wanted to make sure in the future that this parcel of land didn't get reallocated to something else, and we asked them to dedicate it, and they were in full support, and they happily dedicated this land to the purpose of behavioral health. And, you know, in the future, we don't know, maybe there'll be another campus that's needed to expand out services, but for now, this is a county-owned behavioral health campus in perpetuity. So I brought along a few renderings of the acute care facility. If you get a chance to drive south on Taft Hill Road and you get to Trilby to the right, you really can't miss this very large, beautiful building that's connected to nature, beautiful views of Horse Tooth Rock, and we will have tons of walking trails that connect to Coyote Ridge, open space to the south, Cathy Fromm Prairie to the east. It really is a very nice connection to nature out at that space. Some of the services that will be provided in this facility, there's six different levels, and honestly, there are none around the country that exactly match. We've had to cut and paste from different best practices around the country. When it first opens, Summit Stone is going to phase the opening of this building as they have to bring on about two hundred new staff to operate this facility. They're working on the licensing that they need right now to become an opioid treatment provider and be able to do medication-assisted treatment for those that are struggling with addiction issues. There will be an urgent care or kind of like a psychiatric emergency room, if you will, so we can reduce the usage of our emergency rooms and our jails. Obviously, overly priced, extra expensive for people that don't need that level of care. So the intention is that this facility would be the right level of care for folks that are in a psychiatric emergency. We're working on destination protocols with our first responders and EMS folks right now to make sure that they know when they come upon a scene and somebody's there, how to make the decision of whether to go to the emergency room or to the acute care facility. So there's not questions about trying to get the person to the right location the first time. There will be a lot of care coordination. I think they're going to have fourteen care coordinators in the facility. The idea is there that the minute someone comes into the facility, they are connected with the care coordinator that starts a discharge plan to make sure that they are connected to all of the services that they need, and we're really intentional about that warm handoff to what they need when they're released from the facility. Obviously, lots of talk around withdrawal management, also known as detox services. This will be the first dedicated detox services in Larama County. Currently, we send folks over to Weld County to do that. We'll also have crisis stabilization there, and again, the pharmacy and lab. Things that will be added to the facility, once that first phase is open and we've got a smooth running of this new facility, they will add intensive residential treatment. So that's intended for folks that need a little bit longer stabilization after they've withdrawn from drugs and alcohol. We will have the intention of a teaching facility, if you will, we're calling it a center of excellence. We're creating relationships and partnerships with universities around the country. For example, Mahari University in Nashville, Tennessee, a historically black university, starting in twenty-twenty-four, will send all of their PAs, their physician assistants, to our facility to get trained up in behavioral health if they want to stay, job opportunities, but nonetheless, they will have training in behavioral health to take back to whatever program they decide to work for. The intention is that this center of excellence will be the location nationally for anybody that wants to have training in behavioral health. Larama County is the place to come to get that training. Working with CSU, UNC, Front Range, Ames, a variety of different universities, so we have student experiences through internships, fellowships, and even residencies for the, for med students. Relationships with UC Health, so their docs can come in and do rotations. With primary care physicians, they can come in and do rotations to get more familiar with behavioral health meds, some of the criteria that's used in diagnosis, and really reduce the stigma, folks. Over eighty-five percent of primary care physicians say that their primary care clients come in with behavioral health issues and that they admit that they are untrained and they don't know how to best serve their patients. So we look forward to being that partner. Yep, there's still a little bit of snow on the ground there as well, but the building is coming along. Again, it's about a sixty thousand square foot building, sixty-four beds. We joke about maybe needing some rollerblades to get around the facility. It's, it's one floor and then a partial second floor. So the detox and the crisis stabilization are on the first floor, and then the residential treatment, the longer-term stay is upstairs, as well as some admin space. We're also going to have a community resource, a conference space. So we are welcome to have our community members come and hold meetings. We'll have catering abilities there, and we really want this to feel like it's a public space. It's paid for by public tax dollars, and it's for the community, by the community. So there is a space in there for folks that are interested in holding a meeting, and we'll have a reservation system to do that. Here's the front entrance. What's missing from this front entrance that I'll hope to add in a future presentation is a dedicated sculpture that we had commissioned through a local artist who lives in Redfeather. Her name is Lori Acot, if you haven't heard of her name, and her husband, Adam Schultz. They have Dream Big sculptures. And she created a unique piece that will be placed in front of this facility. It's called The Journey. And it's three humans, that could be anybody. And the symbolism of Lori's work is that they have long legs to overcome life's obstacles. And the first human is holding a lantern that will be lit at all times, and his hand is out, and he's welcoming and providing support to the second gentleman that is leaning down and reaching for the hand to help up the third gentleman that will be climbing up on top of a rock. It's a really wonderful symbolic story of the journey of help and healing that we think represents what the intentions of this facility are. And we will be having a ribbon cutting where that sculpture will already be in place on September twenty-ninth. So we would, it's open to the public and obviously to all of you. There will be invitations coming out, but we love to share that when the time comes. There's physical fitness space, there's a large, beautiful, open lobby with contemplation seating and a space for visitation and folks to come and go, whether you're there for visitation or to get services at the facility. This next slide is just a couple, few renderings of the renderings of the adolescent care facility. Looking at it as a one-story building, about thirty thousand square feet. It will have sixteen beds in it. Those sixteen beds are intended for short-term respite care, not intended to be longer-term residential care for adolescents. Our hope is, is that we work with our families and our community and our schools to get kids regulated again quickly and then back home. The adolescent care facility will be funded through a variety of different means. The county has some ARPA dollars that were earmarked for it. Behavioral Health has some dollars that have been earmarked, and then our hope is to get this ARPA funding. And I just saw on the website that announcements should be made pretty soon about those ARPA dollars, so we're excited to hear about that. We have a program schedule for that adolescent care facility, and once the money is secured, we will immediately go into the program design and construction documents, bringing on architect and our general contractor with a planned opening in twenty-twenty-five, so it's a pretty quick turnaround. Of course, when you need the services today, you know, tomorrow sure feels like a long way off. We will again be contracting out for the services that'll be provided in that adolescent care facility. So a few words just quickly about our advisory councils and committees that help us make decisions around our Impact Fund program. We have a twenty-seven-member technical advisory committee, a fifteen-member consumer advisory committee, and then a fifteen-person policy council made up of eight elect officials, one from each of our municipalities in Larama County, a commissioner liaison, and then six at-large members. All of that information is gathered and compiled by our behavioral health staff. We get recommendations from our policy council and then take that to our board for approval and decisions, and then the staff go back and implement that work. The funding priorities that were established for these dollars to make impacts on and really to kind of drive our results, if you will, are listed here. We feel like it's a pretty comprehensive list that through the twenty years, we should be able to create some outcomes and some data measurements that show that we've actually moved the needle in the right direction. I can share with you that our suicide rates in Larama County are down for the first time in five years. We're seeing a ten to twelve percent decrease in suicides each year since twenty nineteen, and that's encouraging to know that we're going in the right direction on our suicide rates. To date, we have done a hundred and fifty-two grants to over sixty organizations with just close to nine million dollars of funding going out to those organizations. And you can kind of see each year the amounts that we've distributed and how many grants that we've given out to different organizations. And I'm proud to say that Harvest Farms here in Wellington has been one of our funded organizations since twenty nineteen, doing some really incredible work. And we've helped them fund a program called their Peer Leadership Program where they've been able to bring folks on at an entry level and then bring them on as peers and mentors to new members that are coming on board and then build out their leadership to take out into the world of work to get, you know, a job wherever their interests and talents allow. But it's been an exciting program to be a part of, and we're proud to be their funding partner for that. This is just a quick display of sort of a scatter of where the dollars have gone. My favorite thing that this graphic shows is just because there's not very much in some of the areas, as you can see, it doesn't mean that there's not a priority or a need in that area. What really it shows is that there aren't that many providers in those levels of care. And this is where we want to focus on building out increased services around Larama County to ensure that we've got a really broad distribution of services across the spectrum from prevention through recovery. We'll continue to keep track of where our grant funding goes throughout the years with this kind of a graphic. And I already talked about the Bridge Fund and some of the things that we hope to be able to incorporate into that Bridge Fund as we look at the barriers when the facility opens. You can see that rural behavioral health is on here, mobile behavioral health. And ultimately, we're working with our school districts now to build out a comprehensive, school-based healthcare system and using our schools and our communities as a hub for families, for healthcare, for activities. And it's kind of like going back to the old days for some of us. We can remember when schools were a community hub of activity and organization, and we would love to work with our school districts to build out their healthcare support in a school so all students had opportunity to get not just healthcare, but behavioral healthcare at the place that they spend the most time. That was my quick presentation and overview of where we are with the Behavioral Health Initiative. I'd love to answer any questions if you have them.
Start with Trustee Daly.
Thank you so much for those presentations, it's so important. And it's an amazing facility, I've watched it grow. It's right next to the dump, if anybody's curious of where it is, and I spend a lot of time talking about solid waste. So I'm in that area a lot. So, but the last time I did drive there, it took me fifty minutes to get there from here. It is in Fort Collins, but it's on the most opposite further side of Fort Collins from Wellington. And given that we're right along the interstate, generally, we can get a lot of places in Larama County quickly. But that is not. So I, as we are in Wellington, and I represent the people of Wellington, I am so overwhelmed with the amazing facility. Unfortunately, the items that you mentioned that are really big with this Bridge Fund, for example, primarily those kind of items about affordability, transportation, rural care, school-based, all those items, those are the things that really would impact our, our community the most. And we are talking about the most vulnerable members of our community. So given, let's say, somebody did have services there, a round trip of an hour and a half to two hours is not a viable solution to receive care, especially in scenarios where it's just such a difficult situation and they are so vulnerable. As everybody in Wellington does contribute to the costs, and this is a facility that is supposed to serve all of Larama County, I wonder what is in the plans in the future to make sure that Wellington is a priority and that we have a facility near or serving our community? Because we're also part of Larama County. And I'm encouraged by the Bridge Fund items. But I can guess that the millions and millions and millions of dollars that are going to the facility, it's, these are next priorities. You're talking about two thousand twenty-five when it opens, and that seems like so close. But if we're not even on the plan, then what, what are our plans for Wellington residents? So that's, that's my first comment there. I know, I expect you to be accountable to that or be able to tell me what all future plans are. But I'd have to, in every county meeting where we talk about amazing facilities that are coming online, the only county facility we're getting is a dump. So it says something, right? So I have to make sure that that is known. Regarding grants, you did mention that this facility has great connections to nature. And it has obviously proven through several studies that connection to nature, outdoor recreation, trails contribute to positive mental health. So my question is, if we were to consider a grant application for the Impact Grants that would support our build-out of trails and outdoor recreation and gathering spaces for our community, is that something that we could potentially pursue as an impact grant on behalf of the town?
I love that question, thank you very much for your comments. They were heard, and if I had time, I would love to respond back.
That was a lot in there, sorry.
So there are six different priorities and targeted projects that we fund each year. And what I'm hearing you say sounds like it would fit within behavioral health in diverse settings. And that's one of our funding partnerships. And I would love to see a creative grant application that was innovative in incorporating nature into the health and healing of people that have behavioral health issues. I think that that fits perfectly within that behavioral health in diverse settings. And so I would highly recommend the consideration of a grant application for that. Our grant applications go through six different levels of review. It's a very transparent and a very thorough process, so we've got pre-screening, an alignment screening, and then we have sixteen subject matter experts that look at them and score them, and then some executive reviewers. And so they go through multiple layers of review. So I obviously couldn't promise you any funding on that right now. It would go through its normal grant process, but I would love to see that application.
Okay, June. Another recipient of the Impact Grant was our Community Services Center. That project as well, it received half a million dollars, so through that same grant. So that is something impacting Wellington directly, so very appreciated there. The other thing, you mentioned how this will be a training grounds for many universities. I'm happy to hear that local universities are also a priority in there, rather than just ones from Tennessee. That was where I saw when you first said that, I go, what about everybody here? Okay, but what kind of, are you guys considering offering or have any partnerships with Pooter School District for similar training and opportunities?
Yes, so the idea is that we build out these partnerships for the school-to-work pipeline, right? We know that there's behavioral health workforce challenges, and so a continual And so a continual partnership is really to build out the interest of our youth in obtaining a career in behavioral health. So we do talks and we've got very close partnerships. There's task force through all of our school districts. The three school districts are working together historic, like they never have historically. It's phenomenal how they've come together around this issue of behavioral health. And so the, the goal would be to continue having those conversations with our school partners to build out the, the information that students are getting on how to create a pathway to not just become a PhD or a psychiatrist with an MD in, in behavioral health, but all of the different employment opportunities there are from peer to a case manager to an MA to a behind the scenes grant writer or accountant that's in behavioral health. So there's a whole plethora of job opportunities that ourselves, as well as many of the behavioral health partners are working on presenting. We just got finished doing a career exploration event at CSU. And it was for mainly for college students this year. Last year we did it, we kind of rotate year over year to high school students. And so our interest is in kind of quenching their thirst about interests that they have around behavioral health and then providing them with a pathway to employment.
That's wonderful. And then the other part of that too is like support services or support for teachers perhaps, or those kinds of things in addition to career oriented kind of training. So that sounds wonderful. Within your seven priorities, one of them that I was hoping to see there, and I've been, I've been wondering about is the equitable piece. And that comes back to the affordability and the transportation. So given that just on behalf of Wellington, my hope is that when the ribbon cutting happens and the facility opens in 2025, that
It actually opens in December of this year.
Okay, great. Yeah. Adolescent one. Okay, great. Yeah. That we could maybe rely on having free transportation at that time, not something in the distant future, but something immediately that would serve our community. Because that's the top, that's the top barrier in general, overall. There's so many others to be equitable, but I think that would be one that would have an immediate impact in our community.
Transportation has been at the top of our conversation since the beginning planning of this facility at this location. Being aware that it is just one location and the intentions are that it works as sort of a hub of services. And then we build out satellite services around the county. And so transportation is a critical piece to that. There will be dedicated transportation at the facility and through a phone call, through an arrangement of either to 988 or to 911 through our co-responders, which I know the sheriff's office is an integral partner in that for Wellington, through Mobile Crisis that Summit Stone provides as well. So there will be a multitude of different transportation options for folks in Wellington to get to and from the services at that campus until we have the opportunity to build out more of those satellite services.
Okay, well, we have amazing staff that can work with you on the location for the satellite services in Wellington. So
We look forward to those continued partnerships.
Thank you so much. I didn't mean this to be critical. This is such an amazing project and I love it. I just want to make sure it serves us.
I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you.
Trustee Gator.
No, I think you did a great job in presenting information. It's great to actually hear. I know, Trustee, we can get to be a part of this all the time, but it's great. And I appreciate you coming out to give all of us an update on it.
You bet. Thank you.
I am extremely grateful for your presentation. I want to say in here for Harvest Farms to receive $288,000 of your grant funding in 2022 that directly affects Wellington and people in this area. It's wonderful. We actually personally get to hire people from Harvest Farms. So we get to experience the treatment and future sobriety for some of these people. Yeah, so I want to say that is huge. I also know that there's also two other facilities that are available for Summit Stone that are super close to Wellington, which is great for access. Having a relative that has used Summit Stone for that access, it was really convenient and right on North College. So that one I am grateful for. Other than that, 200 new employees. That is amazing in general and all in focused careers, all the way down from a CNA base up to CFOs and other people that are joining in on this team. So it's, I think this is wonderful and I have absolutely no issue with my tax scholars going towards something that supports mental health, but also the opioid issue that we have had here for a while now. And even in Wellington, we've seen an increased effect of fentanyl and methamphetamines in our area. Anything that can help get that a little bit more under control, but also assist our officers and supports after the fact, so they're not returning to reusing, I think is huge. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
I appreciate the presentation. And the one thing we've got to realize here, this is a beginning. And it's going to be a building block for many, many, many services down the road. So I think you guys have a great insight and appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Fantastic presentation, Ms. Dolan. Lots of really exciting things happening here. And I just want to thank the Larimer County as well as the Behavioral Health Policy Council as far as that goes. You guys are doing some amazing work. And certainly as on my regard, I look forward to continuing to work with you guys as far as the opioid abatement council and BHPC and really get some good stuff going. So appreciate it.
Thank you for your partnership on that as well.
Yeah, this is great. Thank you for coming out. I mean, without people like you and those that are wanting to help others get out of addiction and move forward in their lives, we'd be stuck. And so I just really commend you and everybody that works with you and what you guys are doing and then doing it here in Larimer County. Getting a detox center here is going to be huge. Going all the way out to Greeley doesn't make a lot of sense for a lot of people. And it actually turns them away from a lot of the cases that I personally have dealt with. So thank you and thank you for all of your hard work and I appreciate the presentation.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you very much.
All right, we have the consent agenda next. It consists of the minutes of the March 21st, 2023 Board of Trustees Special Meeting, the minutes of the March 14th, 2023 Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, a resolution appointing the members to the Board's Roast or Parks, Recreation, Open Space and Trails Advisory Board. And may I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
Make it a roll call.
Certainly. Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
First action item this evening is going to be an update of the town's financial policies. Item will be presented by our finance director, Charity Campfield. Ms. Campfield?
Good evening. Since I came to the town of Wellington, the message has been very clear from the board that you wanted increased financial transparency. Administration has made it very clear that they want us to move forward to adhere to financial best practices. So part of that is having adopted financial policies. This is our first crack at it. We have been working with the finance committee for the past several months to develop these policies. In my memo, I did state that best practice is also to reevaluate them on an annual basis. And we will be including them in our budget as well. So we would like to provide an opportunity for public comment on the financial policies prior to adoption.
Any comments, questions from the board? Trustee Gator?
Yeah, so as Ms. Campfield shared, the finance committee has been working with staff. And I think we started from some policies that Ms. Campfield pulled from other municipalities of similar size. So we kind of had a good starting point. And then really took a look at that and said, okay, what in here fits what Wellington needs specifically? So for example, there were some things that were in there that were once we just adopted a fund balance policy that was separate from that. So they tweaked some of that. And again, it's just been great to have that feedback from the finance committee to go through with Ms. Campfield and say, okay, what about this? Discussions around it. And I think that this is, and I think that was one of the things that came up was that this isn't something that's just set and done, but it's something that we start with it and then we realize, okay, where are the areas that we have deficiencies? Because we get through a year and say, hey, you know, we should have something around this. And then you go in and adopt that. So I think the important part of that is what Ms. Campfield said, that every year when we're going through budget, we should also be reevaluating our financial policy. The other thing too is that this will help a lot when we're working through future audits to actually have a financial policy that we are following as a town. And I think from a standpoint of our job of being fiduciaries to the, to the residents is that this is what we are doing and this is how we are spending the taxpayer dollars. And I think it's important to have that as well.
Trustee Teets?
No, I'm grateful for the fact that we have a finance committee set up now to look at this, sit down as some incredible minds with Ms. Campfield and actually agree and bring it back to us with a mutual agreement among them. I think that's huge.
I appreciate the quality and the expertise that you and the finance committee have brought and pretty phenomenal. Thank you.
Yeah, really appreciate you guys putting this together. I think obviously to the board, financial transparency and being fiscally responsible is obviously very important to us and certainly our residents. So yeah, appreciate you guys putting this together. I have no issues with it as far as that goes, so.
Trustee Daly?
I really appreciate this effort and I know it's been a priority. I appreciate that, you know, our town is maturing with wonderful leadership that we have within our staff. So and then this is an example of that coming to fruition. So I really appreciate your efforts on this. You were mentioning items on fund balances within this policy. And then maybe I didn't read it closely enough. There isn't any, are there any changes associated with fund balances that would actually impact our existing rates or calculations based on very specific items that we use fund balance for this last year?
No, that was a great question. That was one of the reasons there was some just stock wording. It wouldn't have changed anything, but we realized it was going to be kind of redundant because we had already as a board adopted those fund balance policies specifically. And so the recommendations from the finance committee was let's just pull those completely from this. And then we can just reference over to those existing fund balance policies that the board already passed in conjunction with the water study that was done.
Fantastic. Because when, when that was mentioned, I was like, I didn't read anything here that defined it, defined fund balances. Okay.
That was intentionally pulled so that we could just keep with what we had already done studies around and had found to be in a good place.
Okay, I misunderstood from your comment and the fact that I hadn't read anything like that. So no, but I really appreciate all the efforts. And of course, to our finance committee, of course, for that group of volunteers that have painstakingly worked through a lot of these items and issues too. So thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ms. Campfield. Now we will open this up for any public comment. Going once, going twice, sold. All right. Any final comments from the board? No. No further comments. Make it a roll call, please.
Would you like a motion?
Oh, yeah. Why do I do that?
I'd like to move that we approve the town of Wellington financial policies as presented.
Second.
Now make it a roll call, please.
Certainly, Mayor Shosse. Trustee Gator?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Mason?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Mayor Shosse?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on amendments to the official zoning map of our town. A separate action item. A second action item to be considered by the town ordinance will immediately follow and will include Board of Trustees deliberation on the official zoning map amendments. Members of the public will have the opportunity to provide comment during the public hearing only. So this first portion. Individuals wishing to speak during the public hearing, please fill out the list, name, put your information down there. And then you will be given three minutes to speak. Before we open up for public comment, we will have a presentation by Mr. Cody Byrd, the town's planning director.
That's my cue. Good evening, Mayor and Board. I am Cody Byrd, Don Planning Director. And as we get going here, I want to also point out around the room, tonight's public hearing is on the official zoning map of the town. I have put copies of the zoning map around the room for reference. And the board members received a 11 by 17 copy in front of you for easier reference. It's the same version that's in the packet for this particular item. As the mayor alluded to, there is a public hearing tonight. I'd like to go over the public hearing procedures, just so everyone is aware of how that process works. We'll start with conflicts of interest and any ex parte communications disclosures. And then if the board has any questions, you can ask general questions after the presentation. I will present the, the item on behalf of the town for background and history and what's happened and why we're doing this. Then we'll open the public hearing for public comments and anyone with an interest can speak. Following the close of public comments or no more comments to be heard, the mayor will actually close the public hearing. And then there's room for questions from the board. I can answer any questions. I can come back and speak to that. If there's questions raised from the public, I should be able to speak to most of those and they'll happy, happily do so. And then they'll, we'll move on to, well, we'll close that public hearing. The second item on this agenda is the actual action. These are separated purposely so that the public hearing can be closed. The second item is the ordinance for consideration by the board, and that is where you will do the deliberations. Any questions on process for public hearing procedures? Okay, then at this time I would request if there's any conflicts of interest or ex parte communications, if the board has those, if you could disclose those for the record.
I do. So we have received multiple emails for and against certain areas of the zoning map as we move forward. Looking at this, the emails have all come to our trustee emails. So I just want to make sure that we do note that in case it has any effect or any to do about ex parte communications. I have just had a few meetings and discussions with people that are looking at specific types of zoning that will fit them best as they move forward, opening businesses here in town or maintaining the businesses that they do have here in town. They've all been emailed to me and asked if I would schedule meetings with them and hear their side of everything. So I just want to also disclose that I have had several meetings about all of the zoning changes.
What type of meetings?
So it was more explanation on what they were looking for and what they were trying to do with, say, the, some of the outlaw lots and detention areas. I've spoken with one gentleman that is on the further north side of town related to how his property is zoned and what he's looking at going forward with how we'd want that zoning going. So it was more about communications of what they were looking at when they are discussing what they would like to see in zoning. So I pretty much stipulated that if anyone would like to have conversations with me related to any items, that they can reach out to me and I will try my best to have discussions. Anything that came before the Board of Adjustments related to asphalt plant, I have not had those communications and have reassured people I cannot have those communications. But when it comes to like zoning or land use, those are conversations I have had with multiple people who have reached out to me to discuss it with me.
Okay. Yeah.
Given that it's ex parte communication, it would be required for us to be also receive all the same information. So we all have the same information to work with. So I'm curious if that were to be resolved, how that would happen.
Yeah, Dan?
Do you have a list of those meetings that you've had?
I do. We also have received the same emails from the people that have reached out to me related to the outlaw located down further.
Can you use your?
Yeah, use your mic as well, please.
Yep. So these are outlots that are located further down on the south side of town. We've received all of that in the email. So it's the same conversations, just explaining it. I know Travis Redman came and actually spoke to us with the same items that I had spoken with him about. He came after, when him and I had spoke, he came to that meeting to let us know what he was looking for on his property that's on the north side of town. So this communication has been received. I just wanted to make sure that I also put that out there, that I have had conversations with them and have asked them to come and talk to all of the trustees.
Ex parte communications with regard to the zoning map are, are an interesting one because zoning is inherently a legislative act. And so often when the public is coming to talk to you about zoning in general, that is a
And so often when the public is coming to talk to you about zoning in general, that is a legislative item. What this is really about is, or what we really need with regard to ex parte communications is any very focused communications with interested parties related to specific parcels. Would you say, that's what we're looking for here, correct, Cody?
I, I do agree with that. The zoning by its nature is legislative as, as Mr. Sapienza said, and, and the board has acted in the past on the zone or the, um, land use code updates that affects zone districts of a broad category and what requirements are affected there. This zone map effort is in large part a consequence of changing the land use code and making sure that the, the map is current, reflects those changes, reflects um, a number of other things that I'll get into here regarding, regarding. This map looks a lot different than the current map. We've updated parcels, we've cleaned things up. So this is primarily a legislative action. Um, the reason why we have gone above and beyond in terms of public hearings, public notifications and procedures is to, out of an abundance of caution, make sure that there's you know, full disclosure of all the information. There's not been any effort to hide anything or act in, you know, in any way that's going to put a property owner in a position where they didn't know what was going on. So we have taken an approach of preserving this as a public hearing process out of abundance of caution.
So what we're looking for, I think you've done a very good job of describing the variety of your communications, the nature of them, who they're with, um, and especially the items that have been shared with the rest of the board. And I think that's really what we're, we're looking for, making sure that the decision of the board with, with regard to any particular parcel is based on the record that's in front of us and so all, everybody, including the board and the public knows what information the boards has access, have, has had access to. But because this is a legislative process, of course, the board is going to hear from a variety of people. So it's going to be almost impossible to say all of the, the contacts you might have had. Really, we, we're just trying to cover all our bases. So I think this is a great, um, you, you did a great job of disclosing all of that. So.
Perfect. So anything from anybody else? No. Okay.
Hey, um, so I'm going to start with a little bit of background information. Again, the, tonight's public hearing is, um, considering the, uh, or considering amendments to the official zoning map of the town. This official zoning map is a legal document. It defines every parcel within the town limits in which the town has jurisdiction for zoning authority. Um, it identifies each of those parcels and the zone district by color identifying, um, which uses defined in our land use code are applicable to each property within the town. In two thousand twenty-one, the town undertook, um, a pretty significant effort to update our comprehensive plan. And in two thousand twenty-two, the same, uh, effort was made to update the land use code. Both those documents have been adopted by the town. And the last step in that large process is to clean this map up, um, to make it consistent with the comprehensive plan and the land use code. So that's our current process. We're in that, that zoning map. After the adoption of the land use code, the planning commission took on a series of work sessions. And the planning commission's role in this process is to really kind of dive into the details, um, evaluate properties, um, across the town. Look at areas where the zone map was maybe out of date and needed, needed a refresher. They provided a lot of policy level guidance to staff in terms of what information was needed for them to evaluate in order to form a recommendation. And the planning commission's recommendation is forwarded to the board of trustees and the board of trustees has the, um, the authority to take final action on changing the official zoning map. So as I alluded to, the planning commission met in a series of work sessions beginning, um, in May of, um, two thousand twenty-two, following land use code adoption. They met in those work sessions through September, November timeframe. And in December, the planning commission conducted a public hearing again, out of an abundance of caution, um, to make sure that we had notices out and everything else. And the, the planning commission conducted that public hearing and formed a recommendation for, uh, proposed amendments to the zoning map. Those changes recommended by the planning commission reflected, um, changes in the land use code, including a couple of pretty substantive items that came out of the comp plan and land use code process, as well as a few items that were pretty insignificant in nature, but we felt the need to go ahead and notify of those things to make sure that, uh, out of full transparency, these are all the things that are changing. Some of those larger items, uh, included the transitional zone district that's currently on our, our zoning map. Some of the, I think they're purple or pink, pink on the current zone map. That zoning category was completely removed from the land use code. Didn't provide clarity or direction as to what uses were allowed on those properties, what they were supposed to be, didn't provide any assurances to neighbors, what could be there. And any new use required a conditional use hearing, which is quasi judicial proceeding and a pretty big encumbrance for anyone to know what's going to happen. So that zone district was completely eliminated from the land use code. So now all those pink properties are in need of a new zoning designation. Um, so the planning commission looked at each one of those properties individually, looked at the surrounding environs and, and the adjacency, the corridors and, and identified a recommended option for each one of those, those transitional properties for what they might become. Those recommendations are reflected on the, the recommended zoning map that's in your packet in front of the board tonight. The, um, another substantive change was out of the comprehensive plan land use code process, a brand new zone district was created. The R four downtown neighborhood zone district was created specifically as a result of public comments heard during those earlier processes. There was a desire expressed to preserve the historic and residential character of the downtown neighborhoods. Um, and in particular along Harrison Avenue, McKinley Avenue. Harrison and McKinley avenues were, are currently zoned transitional and those pink properties. And at the time of the comprehensive plan, those areas were identified as an area where the downtown businesses might naturally grow. Um, and we heard very loud and clear from, from owners in the public that, that that was not the current desire and the desire instead was to protect those residential, um, properties so that our four zone district was specific to those needs. And that's how Harrison and McKinley are reflected on the recommended zoning map as well as other residential properties between Washington and. Roosevelt. Thank you. Um, Washington and Roosevelt, um, and between the railroad and Sixth Street. Generally what many of our residents have referred to as old town. Sorry for that one. The, some of the, the lesser changes, um, included the, um, our four zone district category under the old land use code was for multifamily projects and the title changed to R three, um, under the new land use code. The differences between the old R four and the new R three were really very minimal, but there was a change in title that's important for some property owners and management companies with in regards to their legal documentation and what their uses are. So we notified them as well that that change was occurring. And then the, the planning commission in an effort to be completely thorough and making recommendations when looking at the official zoning map also identified a number of, of properties that had other zoning categories, not transitional, but other commercial, primarily commercial land uses. And the commission identified that, that maybe those uses weren't the right land use for that corridor, that specific area. A lot of those were light industrial type uses under the old zoning map and they're recommending either C two downtown, uh, commercial or, um, C one community commercial for some of those districts. I think there's a couple of C threes in there along highway one. That the commission said, these really are kind of out of character with everything else around it. Let's aim for consistency and continuity, um, in those areas. So those were the planning commission's recommendations from December. We presented some of that information to the board of trustees. Board of trustees had a work session on the zoning map and provided some feedback to town staff. We took that and we made a few changes and updated some things based on that feedback. Um, and subsequent to the board having that presentation and a work session, the planning commission also requested some additional time to think about the, um, the public zone districts. The commissioners have identified there's an inconsistency with how that public zone category had been applied across different properties in town over time. And largely that pattern seemed to be that anytime a new development was proposed, if there was any kind of open space whatsoever, the town identified that's a public property, it's zoned public and that pattern isn't necessarily serving the town well. Under our current sort of regulations and land use development. So the planning commission looked at every single property townwide that was zoned P public or might be zoned P public or could be something comparable to P public. And they looked at definitions from the land use code for what are public spaces? What's the intent of that district? What are the uses currently be allowed on those properties? And they recommended a series of, of changes to, um, some of the properties that are zoned P public. The direction from the commission was largely looking at what is the existing use of those properties? What's there now and today? And is it appropriate to, for public access, public spaces, parks, playgrounds, facilities, things like that? And if it wasn't primarily drainage areas was the, the biggest category was if it's used for nothing but drainage and public isn't supposed to be in there. Why are we zoning it public? Let's, the commission's direction was zone those, something, um, comparable to the surrounding land uses. So if it was a residential neighborhood and there's a stormwater detention, detention pond in that residential neighborhood, that pond should be zoned residential, same as the surrounding, uh, community. So that, that was a pretty significant change that happened in, in March. The planning commission made that recommendation. Um, and those changes are reflected on the map that's in your, in the packet. So we're here tonight. Um, I wanted to point out, uh, we did go above and beyond on our procedures and processes. Uh, we included in your agenda packet, public notifications for, uh, newspaper publication that happened for both the planning commission hearing in December as well as the, um, this hearing for tonight. Um, those were advertising in accordance with our land use code. And we also sent notices to individual properties that are affected by these changes. That was eight hundred and sixteen individual notices that were mailed both in November for the December planning commission meeting and in March for tonight's hearing. We do get some of those back. Not every single, um, property on that list. Received the notices, some of them are due to PO boxes. Some of them, the county records don't reflect current ownership. So we do have a handful of those letters that came back, um, and those are in our office, but for the most part, those letters were, were being received because they're not coming back to us. The draft map and all the versions of it have been updated on the website continuously. So that information's been available beginning in May, uh, when the planning commission first took this charge on and, and, and began considerations here. Throughout this process, I, and this is the last piece of my presentation. I thank you for your patience. But I wanted to highlight a couple of specific properties that were, were nuanced throughout the public hearings and planning commission considerations. During the December planning commission meeting, a couple of property owners, um, of property along Sixth Street had received the notification and came to that hearing and said, you know what, you're, the planning commission had recommended properties along the west side of Sixth Street, um, B zone, C one, community commercial. And those individual owners said, we'd really like to keep the residential zoning categories. And the planning commission heard that request and said, you know, that makes, that makes sense. There's adjacent residential R four zoning. And so the planning commission said, we'd be comfortable with either C one, community commercial or R four downtown neighborhoods. And so the owner said, we would like R four downtown neighborhoods. That change is reflected on this map. It's keynote number A, um, in your agenda packet. The map has A, B, C, and D. So A was the three properties that had, had requested that residential zoning along Sixth Street. Keynote number B, uh, or letter B, excuse me, uh, is a property on Second Street. It's, um, behind Papa's table. The owner reached out to staff specifically, said, we bought that property as a commercial investment. We'd really like to maintain the commercial zoning. Planning commission looked at it, said, you know, that property is adjacent to the downtown. It's adjacent to other C two properties. They said, that makes sense from a planning commission standpoint, and they reflected that on the map. Keynote letter C reflects all the public properties that were identified that had changes proposed for, um, adjacent zoning considerations. Keynote D, um, the, the property was incorrectly identified as to parcel boundaries on one of the planning commission's draft maps. The commission brought that to staff's attention. We looked into it, said, yep, you're right. There was a discrepancy in the property lines and it also affected the zoning. So planning commission had recommended clean that area up. And zone the, the individual owned parcels, the same as the same owner's contiguous parcels, which was agricultural. Um, and zone the other portion of it, R two, same as the adjacent residential subdivision. So that was keynote D. I also want to speak to that, um, keynote D because the owner of that property, um, owned several contiguous parcels that are large tracks that are zoned agricultural. There's one of those properties on, um, West Harrison. And the owner identified correctly that that property has previously been zoned C one, community commercial. It's housed other business uses in the past and they would like to retain that, um, C one, community commercial zoning. But that conversation with town staff happened after the planning commission's recommendation. So the planning commission wasn't able to weigh in on that. Staff has looked at that and we are comfortable at a staff level with making that recommendation to keep the C one community commercial zoning based on some of the conversations the planning commission had. It's generally in context with that direction. It is a single parcel. There's adjacent, um, C one, community commercial. And it seems to make sense to staff. Obviously a board, uh, consideration discussion. I believe that property owners here tonight too, who may want to speak. But I wanted to bring that to her attention. That's different and the planning commission has not waited on that particular request. Yes, it is. It's at the corner of West First Street and Harrison. West of the railroad tracks. I'm sorry. It is Garfield. Thank you. My, my apologies. Corner of, of, uh, north of Garfield, west of West First Street. Thank you for trustee. And then, um, a property owner at the corner of Washington Avenue and County Road nine has spoken, uh, the planning commission has spoken, um, excuse me, spoke at the board of trustees in a public, um, forum. Um, and has spoken with staff. Um, there was a desire by the owner of that property to keep that proper, or to zone that property C three mixed use commercial. Um, the planning commission never had an opportunity to weigh in on that. And staff has looked at that. The planning commission's recommendation was C one, community commercial, um, being next to residential in that area and C one community commercial being available across the street, across County Road nine. The other thing that's a little nuanced on that property is that the, um, when that property was originally developed for, um, self-storage uses, it went through a conditional use approval process through the town. Conditional uses are when they're approved by ordinance after planning commission review and board of trustees consideration. Those ordinances run with the land, meaning once it's approved, it stays that way. That conditional use carries year to year. It's transferable across owners. Ownership doesn't change, um, the conditions of that approval. So that conditional use does protect those existing uses on that site subject to those conditions. If it's, if there's a desire to redevelop that property in the future, um, a request can be made to change the zoning district category at that time, depending on the owner's desires and needs. And lastly, I wanted to highlight, I believe, um, another owner is here tonight who, who will likely speak. Um, I heard from a representative of the Boys and Girls Club, um, regarding, um, the property along Sixth Street. Um, that property is jointly owned by, um, the town and the Boys and Girls Club. And the boy, I'm, I'm, I got some new information that wasn't really considered in this overall update that maybe there's a desire by the Boys and Girls Club to consider a broad range of uses for that site for the future. Um, I didn't get the impression that, that a definitive direction had been decided by their board. Um, but largely that conversation was, um, what can we do to preserve the Boys and Girls Club ability? To utilize that asset. Um, in prior conversations, the basis for, um, the recommended, um, official zone map amendments was based on prior conversations that there was a desire to sell that property for revenue. And if that, uh, position has changed, um, then that's kind of new information this board hasn't heard. So I want you to be aware of that. I think, oh, representative from Boys and Girls Club will also speak to that. Um, but I wanted to acknowledge that conversation. That was lengthy. My apologies. Any questions that you have regarding the information?
Trustee Wiegand?
Not at the moment.
Trustee Mason? Trustee Daly?
Confirming all Cs are those that were previously public that have been reconsidered? Is that correct for Cs?
You're referring to, um, in your agenda packet, there, there is a map that identifies, I've, I've called them keynotes, A, B, C, D.
Yes.
And so those, not the zoning categories, but the keynotes, the, the parcels identified with the yellow Cs are the properties that were zoned public. And the planning commission is recommending a different change reflected by the color on the, the, on the recommended map.
Okay. So those are throughout town.
Yes, the planning commission looked at those public properties townwide and their, their goal was to create consistency across town and not have uh, one offs where the zoning didn't make sense for the intended use of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Gator?
Uh, the only question I have at the moment, um, we're just, just wanted to confirm on changing of zonings. The area of industrial, the north side of town, that is not a new zoning, that is just an existing zoning that's already in place, correct? The area of industrial, the north side of town, that is not a new zoning, that is just an existing zoning that's already in place, correct?
Correct, the the properties on the existing zoning map, I'll I'll refer to the one on the wall, it's not the same as the one in your packet. But they, the areas here. Is that right?
Yeah, purple.
Some some form of purple, um, those properties have been zoned industrial, so there was no change recommended um as part of this effort. Um, the ex, the recommended zoning map was carrying that zoning forward for industrial.
Mayor Shosse, if I may, uh, Mayor Proton McDonald joined the meeting via Zoom at seven thirty. We may, we managed to ask her for a conflict of interest or ex parte communication.
Okay, um, yeah, we'll ask her before she talks, go for it.
Okay, so I just have a few questions to make sure that I'm verifying and understanding correctly. So we have thirty five thirty Garfield Avenue is requesting the C one assignment because they've operated commercially on that property, correct?
I don't have the ad, the address in front of me, is it the one referenced in the staff report?
It it is.
Garfield and West First Street?
Yes, okay, and that that they're wanting to see that C one assignment because commercial already operates out of that area?
Correct, essentially their request was it's already zoned C one, commercial, they'd just like to not see it change.
Perfect, okay, so and then the other question comes with a C three request over on that corner property. And it's mainly because of the fact that when I did look a lot of this stuff stuff up, if you flip to page seventy three. In our packet, and you go down to mini storage facility. It's not allowed in C one or C two at all, and we're recommending remaining it in a C one. But it is conditional in a C three. So that's kind of my question and concern is, um. We've received a lot of requests from multiple businesses. People in the area that would like to see their property zoned one way or another. I would really like to, if this decreases the amount of time that this person has to spend, if they do change that use to something. In that C three thing, if it is assigned C three, then they don't have to continually come back and apply. Request the zoning changes, pay those zoning fees or pay for a variance if they want to see something different, correct?
Then can I, I just want to confirm it in the same location, so which you said a corner property, and could you just help me identify which one?
I can, it's three one four three East County Road sixty four. So it's one of the only, so there's two of them that came. Um, you'd said there was two people that had reached out that the planning commission haven't had a chance to look at yet? Yeah.
This is the the property that I had mentioned with the conditional use approval.
Yes, okay, yep, so and when I look at it, if we recommend C one. It's not allowed in that use in C one at all, even if it has a conditional use permit, I understand that and it travels with that piece of property. But if they were to eventually want to do something to combine something else or build upon that option. C three is a conditional use for the mini storage.
I I think I follow what you're asking, so the the existing uses on site have the protection of the conditional use approval. If they would, if the owner desires to change that in the future and they maybe request a C three um to um accommodate a different type of use. We would need to look at the overall development plan, how much of it stays, how much of it goes. Um, generally speaking, if the property is zoned C three and they're adding maybe a second phase. Um, or something of that nature and leaving the rest there, those existing uses and existing buildings would still be protected under the non-conformity clause of the of the land use code. They wouldn't need to come back and get additional approvals for something that's already there.
Got it, but say they wanted to add a different kind of business, would that increase the complications, the applications, the public hearings, items like that? That's what I'm trying to figure out, so if they're trying to explore more than one option for that property. Or if they sell it and try to explore more than one option besides just the mini storage. Are we making it much more complicated on a property owner that they have to apply? They have to pay a lot of fees when they look at variances, change of zoning, public appearances and public hearings. I'm just trying to figure out how we streamline this process for not only one, but the the second one, and you said we might possibly hear from Boys and Girls Club too. How we streamline this process so they're not having to come and do these public hearings as often?
Trustee Gator?
So I just had a question from a procedural standpoint, I think this is a good and valuable conversation to have. I think it would probably best belong in our deliberations and we can invite Mr. Bird back up. Um, so I think, so I think it's a good conversation, I just think maybe during deliberations is the right place to do that. And we, because I, I'm sure we all have a lot of questions and then we can hear public comment to go into that as well.
Any more questions? Perfect, um, Mayor Proten?
Yes, sir, no questions.
Do you have any conflicts of interest or ex parte?
No, sir.
Perfect. Um, one question I have, maybe clear up a lot of misinformation that went around this weekend. Um, you know of any residential daycares that are within the track F?
So I'll.
Near it, within two thousand feet?
I'll refer to the to the map for real quick, so I'll step away for a minute. Track, track death is a a stormwater detention pond on the south end of town, I'm going to go point to it here. Way down here at the bottom of the map, um, on the new running map, it's here. So they, the official zoning map, the planning commission recommended changing that zoning from P public to C three, commercial, which is consistent with that corridor. Um, the question was, are there any residential daycare facilities there? Um, I had an opportunity to to review um residential daycare facilities within the town limits as of today. And this um state of Colorado has a licensed childcare facility on Globe Flower. Um, that was issued in December of twenty twenty two, um, and that property is within two thousand feet of of the track F that's uh was the subject of your question.
Thank you. Might solve a lot of issues for reasons why people showed up tonight. Okay, um, I guess we can go on to public comment at this time.
I'm going to have a seat right here and I'm going to take some notes, I'll be available after the public comment.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Mayor Shosse, if you could open the public hearing?
Oh, yeah. Okay, now, um, I will open the public hearing on the amendment of the official zoning map, Town Wellington, time being seven fifty two P M. Um. Yeah, if you'd like to speak, come to podium, put your name down, state your address for the record.
I want to get it over with, I am Corinne Brewer, what was I supposed to say?
Oh, yeah.
I wrote it down, um, I live uh six, six, seven, nine Cranesville Street, so um, I'm here to talk about track to F, Columbine. Um, and in preparation for tonight, I read through the twenty fourteen master plan, the twenty fifteen Park and Trails master plan, the twenty twenty comprehensive, all that. All the plans you have on the website, uh, the strategic plan, the updates. Um, I've lived in Wellington over nine years, half that time is in the old town area, the other half is in that Mountain View Ranch neighborhood. And anyone who's been here has known, we've seen phenomenal growth. Um, we've also seen rate increases and other issues going on too. And the attempts to work through all those challenges in a small town. Um, but at the same time, we're trying to not be a bedroom community, we're trying to be a town. Maintain our own identity, our fiscal viability, all that other stuff, you guys already agree with that, I don't have to tell you, um. And I know you're working to address those and thanks for doing that, because I don't want to be in your seats. Um, but I want to voice my opposition and concerns for rezoning that wastewater tract F, Columbine. From public to commercial or any other zoning. Um, I live in that southernmost part of Wellington and the original assessments that were done back in um. Twenty fourteen and twenty fifteen, they even said that that was a. Um, that assessment mentioned that our section of Wellington, that's other sections, this is not my words. It says it's considered below threshold for walkable level of service for park and recreation opportunities. I'm not saying there's not recreation opportunities in Wellington, I'm saying that the southern section. Um, has not been as developed, um, which is understandable and just recently we saw more than fifty homes just in our neighborhood added. And um the town of Wellington, the residents, the homeowners, I really believe would be best served by considering not zoning that commercial. But how to utilize that tract of land, I'm, I realize it's a wastewater detention facility, I realize we poured money into it, had problems. But it could be um a walking trail, a biking trail around it, picnic tables, all those kinds of things, we should be opening it up to public use. Not just we're throwing balls for our dogs, we're really not supposed to be there. It could be soccer fields, I know that the previous meetings, they've shown pictures of it being full of water. Truthfully, I live there, it is dry the majority of the time, I'm not saying there's never water. But uh I think there's options that could be looked into, um. It's the southernmost gateway to our town, people walk or walk, they drive in that way. So there's opportunities to really be an attractive feature, a welcome to our town. And um the neighborhoods there are going to be affected by that as well. Right now, the neighborhood doesn't have any trails, we don't have any, our our neighborhood. Uh, we don't have any paved trails, we don't have, we don't connect to the rest of the Wellington trails. Um, and if you look in the documents, the town has produced a facilities and program goals and strategy. Talks about creating more attractive and resilient environments, incorporating environmental conservation, recreation access. So I mean, just your recent cohesion goals and strategies, developing and upgrading uh upgrading, I'm trying to talk fast because I know there's other people. Um, upgrading, oh, okay, I'll try to, I'll do my conclusion.
I set my timer and I wasn't watching the clock.
If I can just um say my conclusion, and so anyway. I really wanted to say we should be looking to preserve and expand our parks and trail system in South Wellington, we should be promoting community gathering spaces. And buffers from development, not that we don't need business, we do, but zoning tract F. Seems like more like a political maneuver because most businesses can already go into those businesses zoned areas.
How much longer is this going to be?
That's, that's it.
Thank you.
The representative he was talking about, uh, good evening, um. My name is Pete Meyer, live at fifty six twenty one Cadenwood Drive in Fort Collins, I am the current board. Chair, board president for the Boys and Girls Club of Laramie County. Um, first of all, I want to say, you know, I can share with you how proud we are to be operating our facility here in town. Um, it's a pleasure to provide the services that we give for the kids and the families of this community. Um, not everybody knows this, but we are also landowners here, we own a property in conjunction with with the town, called a tending property on on Sixth Street. Um, and unfortunately, due to circumstances, I'm not going to get into, we've only just recently learned about the rezoning requests. And I was able to meet with Cody today to understand it a little bit, and I understand its purpose, and I get it. Um, however, the new zoning is, I would interpret it, especially as we look at the uses. Would not allow the Boys and Girls Club to do what it was, what that land was originally intended for and what it was originally gifted to us for, which is to be a Boys and Girls Club facility. Um. When we purchased the uh church property and converted it to a Boys and Girls Club, five years ago now, probably, um. Yes, our intention was to sell that land, but you know, things change and the club has expanded its services. Um, we are now under, will be under construction on a facility in Loveland that we hope to replicate in. Potentially Wellington, and it is a campus that will serve children from three months of age to eighteen years of age. Will take care of kids that have physical and mental uh. Challenges, we will provide uh mental health services, we potentially will provide um healthcare services there too. Um, it'll, we're just calling it a community kitchen, but it'll be able to serve families that have all kinds of challenges. Families that have multiple kids that need to go to different services, can go, all go to one location, no matter what their challenges are, financial or physical, mental. Um, we're getting national recognition already and we haven't even broken ground, that'll happen soon. Um, and again, that's why our thinking on that land has changed. You know, like, as I mentioned, it was our intention when we bought that to most likely sell it. And use the 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 funds for operating Wellington and other clubs. Um, I I guess what I'm getting to is, I'm would like to oppose the C three zoning because it, on that parcel, because it doesn't allow. The Boys and Girls Club to provide services that could be an absolute benefit to this community.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, um, my name is Ken Padilla. I'm the property owner at thirty five thirty Garfield, the property was brought up in question about C one zoning. That property has been C one zone for uh as long as I've ever owned it. I also own the uh several adjacent properties to that property that are zoned agricultural. Uh, which we do utilize and operate cattle facility there. Uh, and I would just like to say that at this point in time in my operation. I would like to just keep thirty five thirty as a C one uh classification. Uh, it is most beneficial to me to keep it that way, rather than to attaching it to by agricultural operation. From a resale standpoint, and so I would just like to say, I'd like to just keep it that way. Uh, I just don't see any real sense in changing it at this point. I did try and confronted the the previous uh administration when I acquired the property. And trying to get it pulled into my agricultural operation. And I was told I'd have to go through a complete uh zoning process, application, uh, public hearing, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, and so I opted not to do that, and so at this point, trying to be forced into that agricultural. Uh, ad- adoption just does not make uh economic sense for me at this point, so I would like to keep my destination as is. Thank you, folks, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, uh, my name is Aaron Bradley and I live at six, five, six, three Globe Flower Street. Um, speaking on re, on the uh issue of rezoning, the retention pond that is off of Globe Flower for uh for commercial purposes. Uh, the current current uh retention pond is the southernmost area down here in the green. This is the retention pond and the the purple area is a commercial. They're looking to rezone all this as commercial, which would eliminate our retention pond for the Mountain View uh Ranch District. Um, and that is for the for the sole purposes of wanting to put a marijuana um pot plant or a pot store there in that area. Uh, this is located within five hundred feet of a residential area. And I would prefer that we do not eliminate that retention pond for the purposes of putting in more commercial areas. And a marijuana store there, I would prefer not to have the Mountain View Ranch in my own home having a insufficient drainage issues or have the area flood for the. For for the purposes of having those businesses down there. Uh, we do have a daycare that is off of Globe Flower that was previously mentioned, and so if we rezone that for uh commercial and to have a marijuana pot plant. Put there, uh, that would eliminate that daycare, that would also reduce uh drainage for that area, yes, sir.
So the daycare being there would make it so marijuana can't go there, that's what I was trying to clarify that before. So just keep that in mind, rezoning it with a daycare within two thousand feet does not allow marijuana to go in there.
Yeah, and so that would be within that two thousand feet, so that would affect that daycare, that would affect that retention pond.
No, the daycare would stop marijuana from coming in.
Could I?
Theoretically, but.
Make a suggestion and we follow our past precedents in public comment and not engage?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't uh going into the weeds on on the marijuana for the zoning map.
We just had a, we just had a flyer that was stuck on our door that said they were trying to put in a second pot plant. And the only thing that is stopping that marijuana store is the zoning of the retention pond.
And that was misinformation.
Yeah, so that needs to be corrected then, uh, because that's what it was, the information that was provided to us in the Mountain View Ranch uh District. Uh, for rezoning of the retention pond for the purpose of putting in a second pot plant. Uh, so I, as I said, I I I would prefer not to have one, the marijuana store there, um, I'm strongly against that. And I would also uh like to continue to have that area zoned for the retention pond for the purpose of adequate drainage. Uh, during thunderstorms and snow, all the melt off right now that is slowly starting to fill with water. Um, so I'd just like to keep that consideration, to keep that retention pond zoned to one, keep adequate drainage for that area, and also two, to keep the marijuana store away from that area, put it in a different spot. It's too close to schools, uh, too. It's too close to schools, uh, too, too close to schools, residential, and it just doesn't need to be right across the street from my house. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Listico. I am at eighty-six oh five Citation Court, and I would just like to thank you all for your time. Um, I want to address the industrial section north of town there. And how that is not necessarily in, in code or in line with, uh, the non-residential zone best practices to have light industrial separate with that heavy industrial, right? We're starting to get that residential up there. There's a park right there and those are now adjacent rather than having them like a separate with the light industrial. And I think this will inevitably cause friction between the two different uses and such close proximity, proximity, I apologize. And then finally, what I'd ask you all is to postpone a decision on leaving that industrial or approve it with conditions and make that conditional use instead of a right by use for the industrial section up there. Giving this town some more control about what goes in there in case of an asphalt, I guess. Yeah. So that's all I had. Thank you for your time. And, and yes, please think about what I said there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Travis Redman. Um, I own the property that's been discussed on the corner of sixty-four and nine Cannonball Self Storage. And I would like to state that I would request that to be C-three. I've requested with the town. It's a better fit for what it is and for my plans in the future. Um, I also own a property on, uh, West Harrison Ave- Avenue thirty-five oh six. And I'm also friends with some of the neighbors in there, and that's the one that was transitional and set to be C-one community commercial. I think there's a necessary item of clarification there that we need to make, and it's a question also. Um, will those properties be considered non-conforming when the zoning map changes? And that's maybe a question for Cody. Um, I read through the code like six times and I, it's not clear. Um, you say it is.
Uh, well, yeah, we'll let Cody land.
Can you pause my time?
What we'll do is he'll maybe he'll record the questions you have and then he'll come up and address those.
Okay.
What, so continue talking.
Can I hear the address just one more time?
Um, my property is, uh, thirty-five oh six Harrison Avenue. It's, uh, between, it's that block between first and second and, uh, Garfield and Harrison. The reason it's significant and i- in the code, it's, it's unclear. It says that a non-conforming use is any use of land that was legal in existence. And non-conforming on the date the code was adopted, which was a year ago. Uh, but if for some reason it kicks these properties into non-conforming, it puts quite a few burdens on the property owners to, first of all, um, see, they've got to register those with the town. Um, they can't add on. They can't rebuild if there's over a fifty percent loss. And the non-conforming use can be terminated anytime by the Board of Adjustments. It kind of puts the properties on the chopping box block and, and the purpose is to push them to commercial, which I understand, but there's quite a few residences in there and many of those, um, they've, those people have put everything into their, that house. My one neighbor is a, a retired elderly lady and, um, if she had to leave that, she would be, she'd have nothing. Uh, my other neighbor is a Hispanic couple that's in the process of buying that house and they, they have plans to build a garage and they want to add on, which they couldn't do if it's considered, uh, non-conforming. You can't add on or build anything to it. So I'd, I'd like to have that clarified. And if it is the case that those are non-conforming, I think we need to make some provision, uh, around that because I don't think it's uh, it's, and it's kind of a unique neighborhood. There's some commercial stuff mixed in with it. Um, with some residences and some of the houses are, you know, trailer houses and some double wides and stuff. So, but I think it needs some attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I had to spread out some notes. Sorry, guys. Okay, Don Peacock. Um, so I watched some of the planning commission meetings and honestly, sorry, but I nearly fell asleep. They literally went through each parcel one by one and cleaned up a ton of inconsistencies. It was tedious and it was boring, but they did it and kudos to them. Thank God I'm not on there. Zoning should not be based on how it may affect a single business. The changes are the blueprint for the entire town and using it to harm or benefit one business type will likely backfire down the road. It would be irresponsible to apply a different set of standards to a single detention basin that was applied to every other public zoned and detention track. The planning commission in their work session that is recorded applied a very specific set of criteria to each property without bias. To change one property regardless of the methodical method would be spot zoning. And I use that word on purpose, spot zoning. Having said that, the Board of Adjustments needs to do a better job, in my opinion, representing the residents when it comes to approving variances on heavy industrial businesses within eight hundred feet or so of residences where noxious fumes would be released and could be released and homeowners could be affected by it, especially those with asthma. And keeping it short for you tonight because I know you got a lot. Um, but also be wary of misinformation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Going once. Got to bed.
Here's some of the things people are saying. And I, I, I am not sure about what people said about the, uh, zoning this into C-three here. And I am concerned about a pot shop being put in anywhere in the town. But I want to underma- understand if there is our plans to put in a pot shop. There was my understanding there. There was a plan kind of circulating to, to, to go in there. And I would like to know what the, uh, the people here know about it.
So this is public comment, not public question. So I cannot answer those questions. At this time.
So I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. So I can't, I just can't.
Coming in, well, because I, I can, I could give a speech about marijuana and how bad it is.
Right. Whatever you would like. I just can't answer a question.
I'm sorry.
So what's, yeah, I cannot answer a question. That's correct.
All right. Well, you know, can somebody here clarify it for us all here?
This is public comment. So questions would have had to been sent prior. Um, and we will be having discussion on marijuana at a later date. Right now, this is for zoning.
Okay. So this is rezoning, but it's not rezoning that will result in having a pot shop in town.
So once again, this is public comment, not question. I will, I will try to do what I can.
Okay.
Ask proper questions to Cody.
Do feel that we should not have.
Ladies and gentlemen, this man has a hard time hearing. I would appreciate if you could keep it down so she could hear.
I have sight problems too. So I can't really see the screen a lot of times. I can see the numbers up there. But for my time remaining, I'll just say that I will, I do not want a pot shop in town. And especially, well, I know there's already one. I would, I, I'm speaking against any other further pot shops. Because, uh, on behalf of the half of the people of the, of this town or more who do not want it and voted against it, that we not have anymore in town. We've, or I don't know what will be next. I don't know if it'll be the magic mushrooms or some other drugs that are planned to come into our town. I feel that, uh, there are a lot of problems with marijuana. It causes problems with the, with the, uh, the brains, the behavior of the people who take it and smoke it and so on, or take it in other forms. It also causes prob- behavioral problems, which we are now dealing with. And there are a lot of evidence that it causes all kinds of other problems, homelessness, suicides, uh, other kinds and of things. And I've lived in a neighborhood with lots of drugs. And there were constant attempts to rob people. It wasn't safe to walk in the streets. I don't want Wellington to be like that. I want it to be a, a very good conservative town like it was a few years ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I'm Christopher Grant. I live in Buffalo Creek. And I would like everyone, uh, to read a CDC review of health effects of occupational exposure to asphalt. This report was by the CDC, the U.S. Department of Health and Occupational Services. In this report, we have health effects of occupational exposure to asphalt. And I would recommend all of the trustees and all of our community members to read this report. It is extensive. Tells you all the chemicals, everything, all the carcinogens. It's amazing how much information's in here. And it took me literally ten seconds to get this information. Ten seconds. So I hope everyone in the community reads this. Because I don't know how this got zoned. Heavy industrial. If it got zoned heavy industrial because of a chicken plant, then there should have been city amendments that said, hey, we're gonna make it heavy industrial because we got a.
Excuse me, sir. Can you get closer to your mic so they can hear you online?
We got a chicken plant. Okay, sorry. Okay, those city amendments should have been reviewed by the city attorney. Because you know what kind of liability you're gonna have? Making that heavy industrial? I got a child that has asthma. He's ten. I waited for ten years for the park to be built that was promised ten years ago. The park's built. We love it. We enjoy it. We have a blast. We have absolutely amazing time in that park and that park's gonna smell like tar. Everyone hear me? The park's gonna smell like tar. Enjoy the tar. Okay? CDC report two thousand and one. And if the planning commission had a clue, and no offense to anyone personally, okay, where were the city amendments with a variance for the chicken fact, for the chicken? Okay? Making this, I mean, now we just, everyone over here is getting cancer, you see? That's cancer. I'm moving. You want to expand this town? You want to keep putting out building permits one after another? Where's the water coming from? Okay? Let's get to real business. Take care of the community, the people. Not the plants, the people. Heavy industrial means chemicals. Carcinogens. I want everyone to do their homework. Okay. You know how many people complained to me about, we have no idea what carcinogens are in an asphalt plant. Really? Read the report. Took me ten seconds to Google. And you know why people can't find it? First I Googled and I know my time's up, but first I Googled.
Thank you for your time.
Carcinogens.
Thank you.
Okay? Read the report. Appreciate your time.
Going once. Going twice. Public comment is now closed. Um, hearing no further comments, closing time of the official public hearing for the amendments, the official zoning map of the town, time being six eighteen P M. Eight eighteen. What am I doing? Eight eighteen P M. Now we'll deliberate. Um, at this point, there will be no more public hearing. And Cody will come back up, address questions that were brought up, issues with the zoning before we as a board have further discussion.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, so this, this next part is consideration of an ordinance. The ordinance was drafted, um, based on the planning commission's recommendation for the map that was included in your agenda report. Um, obviously, we've, we've heard some information from, from the public and individual property owners tonight. Um, so one of your motion options is to, um, make changes to the official zoning map. If, if you choose to adopt it or adopt it with changes, we can certainly help you craft that motion appropriately. I did take notes, um, throughout the public comment period and I would like to try to go through and address some of the questions or topics that I, that I heard information relative to. Um, and of course I would stand for any questions that, that the board has relative to that. Questions on the ordinance before I dive into some responses. Not to pick on the individuals, I'll kind of go in order just because that might be easiest to follow along with. I, I heard a, and then not trying to quote anyone, so I'm not putting words in mouths. Um, but I made a note that there was some opposition and concerns regarding, um, potential rezoning of Track Def. That was the property on the south end of town. It's currently zone P public. Planning Commission after an evaluation had recommended, um, changing that uh, property to, um, C-three commercial, uh, mixed use commercial. The, that, that was, planning commission's recommendation was based on an evaluation of all the properties townwide. Um, and it was pretty, we, the planning commission spent probably a two-hour-long meeting on that one topic of the, the P-public zone districts. Um, I didn't mention it earlier, but in your agenda packet, um, there's a table of, of each of those properties that the planning commission evaluated in some criteria for, for what was being considered. My apologies for not mentioning that earlier, but that was in your agenda packet and available. The, there were some, some comments about while I'm on that topic, a later comment brought, came up on the same subject matter. And the, one of those comments was that if that property was rezoned to, um, commercial or any other zoning category, um, that it would remove the stormwater detention for the neighborhoods. And, and that would not be true. Um, the stormwater detention pond, uh, first of all, Track Def is a property owned by the town. Um, so the town has that property in its control. Um, there's also a drainage easement covering that property. Um, drainage easements are plotted and recorded. Um, they protect that, that area for drainage purposes. Um, so there's that level of protection there to ensure that that stormwater pond remains a stormwater pond. And I say stormwater pond pretty vaguely. There's a lot of other drainage facility and infrastructure that ties into that as well. Um, and furthermore, a tract is not a developable lot. Um, a, a lot is developable. I mean, a, a building permit could be issued. A tract cannot be issued. A building permit would have to go through subsequent development review processes in order for any, any building permits or change of use or, or anything else for that. Um, so I wanted to kind of tie those two things together since they're both related to the same subject matter. The representatives from Boys and Girls Club, um, brought up concerns about the future uses of, um, um, regarding future uses of the property along Sixth Street. Um, I don't want to interpret much of what was said. I think it was said pretty well from, from that, um, uh, representative, Mr. Meyer. I think Mr. Padilla's comments speak for themselves. Um, wanting to preserve that existing C-one property for the property at, um, Fairfield and, and, um, West First Street. I heard a question about the, um, I'm paraphrasing, but I think the substance of the question was relative to what is the effect of making amendments to the town's official zoning map in relationship to marijuana topics? Um, and so I, I'm certain I won't be able to answer every question regarding that in one fell swoop, but I'll, I'll take a first step there. And then if there's follow-up questions or discussion, I'm happy to circle back. The official zoning map, as we discussed earlier, is in a, in a, that's a legal document identifying the uses allowed within town on each specific property. Updating that zoning map is being undertaken to, um, clean up some corrections, um, make some necessary changes, uh, bringing in our consistency with the Conference of Planted Land Use Code. Um, that's a, a broad legislative act. It's not intended to be a site-specific, um, rezoning development proposal or otherwise. Um, so the effect of making those changes, um, is broad in nature as opposed to site-specific. I, I know that the topics regarding, um, marijuana and allowed uses, um, are under a separate ordinance that, that was approved by the voters. Um, the marijuana ordinances has, um, protective overlay buffers around identified property types and zoning categories. Um, and so those are still in effect today regardless of, of actions, uh, on the official zoning map. Um, so the two topics are really not related. I certainly understand that there's some nuance that can be read into that and future decisions down the road could, um, future decisions down the road could um, become a factor on site-specific development plans. Um, there was um, a question about industrial and light industrial um, uses for properties on the northern area of town. I think the, the comments were pretty well made by individuals um, regarding general best practices for um, transitioning from areas of heavy industrial to light industrial to commercial to residential. That's a well-documented um, zoning and development strategy to um, help separate incompatible uses and integrate compatible uses. Um, so I, I don't disagree with those comments. Um, certainly, some of the, the nuanced information relative to site-specific proposals that are still in the process of review. We can't speak in detail on those. Um, but I, I can speak to the Board of Adjustments, having taken action on a topic there recently, October, uh, 2022. Um, did look very specifically at the existing land uses and entitlement of those, those land uses relative to there being no separation um, dating back a couple of decades. Um, and so certainly some of those transitional areas, um, I shouldn't use the word transitional because we've eliminated that zoning, um, but they um, stepped down um, from density and intensity of uses. Um, didn't exist in our prior land use code, and that, uh, an effort was made to uh, provide some separation from incompatible land uses moving forward. So a lot of the question has come down to, what do you do with those that are already entitled for uses and they're, you know, abiding? Um, there was also a question about, uh, or I heard, I heard a request for the property at the corner of Washington and County Road 9 to be zoned C3. Um, that's certainly something that this, this board can consider. We spoke to it earlier in the presentation materials. Um, the planning commission had not considered C3 for that property when the planning commission went through their initial review on, on the uses around town. Property was previously zoned transitional, so they had to assign a new zoning district recommendation to it. They specifically chose C1 because of its compatibility with that corridor and adjacency to residential neighborhoods. Um, they did not consider C3 because there's no other C3 along that particular corridor in that vicinity. Um, so it would be a single property with that different zoning designation. Um, it might also be worthy of considering um, in the board's deliberations that um, certainly, C3 zoning could be considered for, for a specific use, and we don't have a proposal um, an application or review at this time, identifying what exactly would be proposed there. So zoning it something different without a proposed development plan may be a little bit premature. Um, same individual brought up um, questions about uh, C1's own properties on Harrison Avenue, west of the railroad tracks. Um, those properties are currently zoned transitional. Um, it is certainly an area with a, a variety of, of existing uses with a broad spectrum of uses there. Um, the planning commission did look at this area pretty specifically um, in making their recommendations, and as you can see on the, the map uh, that was recommended and in your packet, um, they looked at the area closest to Highway 1 being zoned C3, and then stepping down to C1 uh, for the kind of mid-block and then to residential, kind of matching existing uses and expected development intensity, moving away from the highway. The, the C1 category does identify um, a variety of neighborhood uses that would be allowed as a use by right. If that C1 zoning is approved, it would not affect the existing uses of those properties. They would be protected under um, the language in the land use code regarding non-conforming uses, non-conforming structures. Those protections are pretty broad. Um, there is some nuance um, that Mr. Redmond had alluded to that is confusing or can be challenging to understand if you're not familiar with that vernacular. Town staff is certainly available and happy to answer any of those questions for those individual property owners on what their rights are, how they're protected, and, and what their options are moving forward. Um, we already kind of commented on the public zoning. The planning commission did spend a lot of time specifically talking, talking about that topic and that, some of that information's in your packet. Happy to answer any questions as we move forward. Um, kind of already alluded to the effect of the zone map changes relative to marijuana topics. Um, and I, last I noted a comment about um, how the industrial property north of town became industrial and was it associated with um, the chicken plant, um, the infamous uh, chicken plant. Um, I wasn't here for that, that history. I have heard a lot about it. Um, based on the information and research that, that I have done through the town's records, that industrial zoning was in place at the time the chicken plant was proposed. Um, they did go through a development review process. Um, the property was originally one large lot, about 30 or plus or minus acres, and there was a minor subdivision approved to specifically um, identify one lot for a specific development purpose, and that did ultimately receive approval. The zoning of that land had been industrial throughout that process from the time it was annexed and zoned in the town. Um, again, that's based on the information that, that I've been able to find in the town's records. I was not here at the time, but I've certainly uh, done quite a bit of digging into that topic. Those were the high-level questions um, that I heard that I wanted to respond to. Again, not believing that I captured every single question or comment, but that was my first take on it, and I'd be happy to respond any further questions.
Thank you. Preston Wigan.
I got a couple of things that I'd like to uh, consider on here. Um, as far as rezoning, the uh, what was it, Track F or?
Yeah, the detention pond.
Right, the retention pond. I live over in the meadows. And we have, on the south side of the meadows, we have a retention pond. We got our pond over there. And in the retention pond, we have uses, a baseball field. Uh, that would be a good place for trails, could be. I mean, just because right now the development has not completely went to that spot, and to develop it doesn't mean it does not have uses for a park. So to eliminate that and to change it to C3, where it should be, I don't see why it should be anything different than what the retention pond, uh, baseball field, uh, park that we have over in the meadows, why it should be any different than that. Second thing is the uh, industrial classification up north. Uh, you know, you have all the residents there right close. And uh, you know, again, not even considering the asphalt plant, which uh, I know where it's at right now, and it I really don't want to have that ugly thing in our town, really. But, I know. But, that's good, but uh, there is a lot of problems that could happen there. I mean, you got, again, the carcinogens, everything else. I mean, I had lived on a property one time that I didn't realize was a landfill. The two kids that were born on that landfill, we had problems with. You know, we had heart murmurs. We had a one that, or foot was not quite right, and we had to do some medical intervention at that point. So these things can affect the people. And I don't blame for our people being nervous about it. So again, I think we should, I mean, there's plenty of room up north of that that would uh, probably be more conducive for that plant. You know, I, all for bringing in business, but we want to make sure that it's the right business and it's right business location. Thank you.
Sorry, you're talking about moving the purple industrial. You're proposing a light industrial instead of the
Can we use our mics?
Oh.
Sorry, I'm just clarifying. Um, so is that what you're proposing? Is that purple industrial transition to the light industrial? That, that, that was my question.
Thank you.
Preston Dietz.
I want to hear additional questions first before, is that okay?
I'd like you to go now.
Okay. So, um, I guess my proposal from hearing Boys and Girls Club would be to support their request for that C1 zoning across from the elementary school. Um, if in fact, that is what's being brought to us, that's my suggestion on that one. Um, as far as going up north, I would support Dave's suggestion on light industrial. Looking at the property request on Highway 1 and uh, County Road 64, I would support the C3 request because we've taken everybody else's requests and supported a lot of them. I don't see why we would not. Um, my question for Cody, and you can answer this just as you're going down your list. The red that is highlighted here in community commercial, is that not allocated for an elementary and middle school? And future planning and development?
You're talking that tract here?
Yep.
Yeah, I, I can answer that question now if that's desirable. Um, so I'll reference the map. These properties?
Yes.
So the, the, the two parcels north of the existing middle school, high school, um, when, at the time those were annexed into the town of Wellington by Pooter School District, the current land use code had not yet been adopted. So the, the categories to choose from were different. And the discussions with the school district was they have intent to uh, develop for future elementary school, future middle school, potential transportation facility. There's some other things in their master plan. Um, and the C1 community commercial, at the time that was adopted, supported all of those uh, potential uses. Um, the planning commission looked at this, the C1 zone is existing. There's not any need to change that currently, and there's nothing developed there currently. Um, it's general best practice um, to, to, you know, preserve vacant parcels for uses that they would be suitable to. So restricting those to public zoning, um, even though they are owned by the school, we understand that's the school's intent. If they chose to rezone that to develop it in the future, they'd have to go through a process. So we've just kind of the direction was to leave it alone because it doesn't have to be changed.
Got it. Um, so my suggestion would be to transition that corner lot to C3 as property owner requested. Um, the clarification that was brought up today, because this was actually something that was new to me. Um, the properties that we are looking at transitioning in so the ones that came under question by Mr. Redmond, the red box in C1, right behind the C3 on Cleveland. So those ones, you're verifying that those property rights of those owners would be protected, and if they did want to go and build a garage, they could go and do so if this transitions.
If the C, if the C1 zone, I'm sorry, Mayor. If, if the C1 zoning or any other zoning is approved for those areas, the existing uses and structures are protected under the non-conformities language of the land use code.
But I'm talking about a new building on that property.
And any new structures would have to conform to the, the existing land use code. Um, so the, that's referring to like setbacks, building height, things of that nature. The existing use of the site, if it's identi, if it's already a residence, the use doesn't change because they add a garage. It's still a residential use. So they would still be able to construct additional structures as long as they conform with the setbacks and other requirements.
Got it. Um, and then the other one would be my recommendation for the C1 from the uh, gentleman's request earlier, right across the street from that block of red property in question.
The one that's got all the agriculture around it?
Yes. And my other question was, is in that, the um, gosh, in your C identifications, um, right kitty corner, it says that this outlaw, the detention area that was previously public is transitioning to that C3. And it said in the future planning, it said here that future planning, there is a parks, a trails suggested through that area. Would that not be, and I know I talked about this at our work session, was there a reason that it did not transition from the planning commission to stay that public instead of the C3 if a trail is planned through that area?
Can I refer to the map, make sure I'm in the
Absolutely.
This, where you're referring to, this is West First Street, Cleveland. There's A and A Storage.
Yes.
Property behind it.
Yep.
Um, I'll repeat for the microphone. Um, properties at West First Street, um, beside A and A Storage, there's a town-owned property between um, that existing commercial development and Box Elder Creek. Um, the, the property there was recommended to be zoned uh, C3, consistent with the planning commission's other recommendations for that corridor, uh, being along Highway 1 and so being able to support a higher intensity commercial development. Um, it is a town-owned property. There are no current uses on it. A large part of the planning commission's considerations and looking at the um, the public zoned properties was identifying what's there today, what is there existing, um, for, especially for town-owned properties, the planning commission, the recommendation was based on the, the knowledge that for the, for a town-owned property, the town has the authority to change its zoning district for its uses at any time. And so their guidance was, when there is a park proposed, when there is a trail proposed, and it's being accessible for public uses, go ahead and, and change that, you make that change on the official zoning map at that time to reflect that. In the meantime, zoning it public now um, would prevent someone from coming back and redeveloping that property differently for commercial uses if the town desired to sell it. Um, so the, again, kind of consistency with the adjacent subdivision. The planning commission recommended C3 for that corridor. Zoning the property adjacent to it as C3 because there's not an existing use was their recommendation.
I think that's, that's all I have right at this time.
Perfect. Preston Gator.
All right. Um, so I'll start with that one because we were just discussing it. I think that the only concern I have, um, if that's something where we envisioned, because I know we've talked a lot about trails coming through town. Um, in a lot of cases, I think the town has shot itself in the foot by not setting something up for a future plan, and then we go to make that future plan, and now other stuff is in the way. So if we do zone it is, again, I understand it's owned by the town right now. Um, so obviously, we can change that if needed in the future, but if the thought process is, hey, we think that this would be a good location to have a trail through town, it would make sense to leave that as public so people aren't looking that, that, and again, speaking towards this specific one here that we just finished talking about. Um, is something I think that we do need to consider. Um, if we're gonna zone something as commercial, the other question too I had is if there is a detention pond, I don't know how much of that is taken up by the detention pond. Would that even be able to be um, built on without losing that use of the detention pond?
And are you referring to the same property?
Yeah, same property, yeah.
There's, there's not currently a detention pond constructed on that property. It is adjacent to Box Elder Creek. Some of that area is encumbered by floodplain.
Got it.
Um, and I'd have to research to be sure. It may be encumbered by a drainage easement as well. Um, but there's not currently a, a stormwater facility on that property.
Got it. Okay, so it's not currently stormwater. Okay. Um, but that's the thought process that I think that would be wise of us to look at if we are talking about, and I understand we're not doing a trail tomorrow. But rather than saying, well, let's just rezone it when we get to that point, if we're talking about property that the town already owns, and we think, and I know, I think we're doing our Parks Master Plan this coming year, or actually working on through grant process for that right now, and I don't know if that's gonna incorporate trails or not. I don't know if that's part of that. Um, but I just, my concern is that if we're gonna put it as commercial, that we're basically saying this is our ideal of what this would be used for. And if we're thinking that this actually should be used for something else, it would not be wise to put it as commercial. Um, the second question is that block of C1 right behind that, um, those were trans, transitional prior to this zoning, correct?
A and A Storage, right? Um, so this portion right here.
Oh, okay. I believe is transitional currently. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and those are, are those residential uses?
There's a mix of
A mix?
With that block, there's, there's some contractor commercial. It used to be Randy's Tire. Um, that was an existing, I believe that's correct. Um, it's been a little while. There was a tire shop there for many years. Um, there's existing single-family residential. There's modular units. There's stick-built units. There's, used to be Wish Landscaping was located over there. Um, and there's some, some unique approvals that happened um, back in, I say back in the day because I don't have a specific date, for kind of some live-work type of units. Um, so there, there's definitely a variety, and the storage uses, self-storage around there. So there's definitely a wide range of existing uses.
Okay, and then did all of these property owners receive notification about the zoning process that their um, properties were proposed to be rezoned to C1 community commercial? That their um properties were proposed to be rezoned to C one community commercial?
I can't speak to whether they received them.
We're sent.
But notices were sent and we, again, we, we sent individual notices to the addresses of record for any property that was being affected by a change in the zone map. That included all the transitional properties. So we did send notices. Those individual property owners based on the county records we have available to us.
Okay.
Um, we also published the advertisement for tonight's public hearing in the Colorado, in the town's official news newspaper. Um, and I already reiterated the history of the information on the website uh via the town's social media and and prior meetings and agendas and discussions.
Okay, did we receive any feedback from property owners in that area, that little block there, requesting that they not be included in the C one commercial?
Within that block, we, um, town staff, um, a little bit of myself, a little bit, um, from Paul Whalen, our senior planner, have have had some conversations with um Mr. Redmond. And and as he alluded to, we didn't make contact today when he was reaching out with some of those questions on the C one. Uh, we'd be happy to follow up on those. Um, we didn't receive any other correspondence from or communications from anyone else in that area. Um, there was one individual um that owns the old saddle shop um along Highway one that attended the planning commission public hearing. Um, and his comment after the meeting was, I don't have a problem with the recommended C three zoning right there along Highway one. He bought the property. This, these were his words to me after the meeting, but he indicated that, that that made sense for him for investment purpose. That he's living there now, but down the road, he sees more value in the commercial asset. So those were the only um property owners that we specifically heard from.
Okay. And then I, if I recall correctly, because we talked about this when we were going through the zoning, not the zoning, but through the land use code. We did make some adjustments with the with regards to non-conforming uses for residential, I believe. Um, in regards to being rebuilt. Is that correct? That we added some additional protections that weren't initially in there because of the concern that if you owned a home in an area that got rezoned to commercial or was zoned as commercial, and your house burned to the ground, you would now no longer be able to rebuild your home. If I recall correctly, we did put some additional protections in for specifically those examples.
There were some specific examples, and I don't have the land use code in front of me. Um, but as I recall, there, oh.
Like, because I was looking at that, if you want to.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, absolutely. While you're looking for that, I I I recall that some of the specific nuance was related to um, existing religious land uses and and protecting their ability to
Yeah.
to rebuild if they choose to do so. I believe the same was true for residential properties in the C two downtown.
Yep.
Uh, district. I I believe those were the two changes that were specifically made. Trusty Daily, did you find that section?
Yep, so it's on one page, one eighty-four of the land use code, section seven, one, ten, E, two. Damage or destruction if the structure in which a non-conforming use is housed, operator or maintained is destroyed by any means the extent of more than fifty percent of its fair market value. Use may not be reestablished except in compliance with all regulations applicable to the zoning district in which it's located. This is what scares people, that part, right? And that we acknowledge scares people and we agreed was not right in certain scenarios. Those scenarios, um, where, okay, so I'll continue. B, if the structure in which a non-conforming use ha- uh use housed, operated or maintained is partially destroyed, or the damage does not exceed fifty percent of its fair market value. The non-conforming use may not, may be allowed to continue. And the structure may be rebuilt, but not enlarged upon approval of the building permit. That's not going to help you feel better yet, but that's just B. C, in the C two downtown core commercial district only, residential uses lawfully existing as of the date of this code adoption are deemed conforming uses. It may be reestablished upon approval of a building permit. D, in the C two downtown core commercial district only, religious land uses lawfully existing as of the date of this code adoption are deemed conforming uses. It may be reestablished upon approval of a building permit. Those are the things that we put in specifically to protect those rights.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much, Trusty Daily. Okay, so that would apply to C two, that wouldn't, those protections would not apply to those C one, though. Those C, they they would have the normal fifty percent, but they would not have the special protections that were put in place for the C two downtown, because these are proposed to be zoned as C one. Right here. So C two would be along Cleveland, basically C two is along Cleveland Avenue. And then these are on Parkfield or C one. And so that's just something. But the issue with that, well.
Issue with that.
We haven't heard anything, we haven't heard anything from anyone saying, hey, I don't want to be zoned as C one. I I know Mr. Um, Redman, Redmond shared that he had had some conversations with his neighbors. Um, but that's the one issue I have with that, just, I'm not sure what to do with that one. Um, another thing too, I mean, I appreciate members of public coming out. This is the emails that we received earlier today was a total of seventy-eight pages, I think, with some studies. So I appreciate that being sent. It was nineteen pages of just actual emails from residents with their concerns about um, the zoning and a lot of that applied specifically to the setbacks that were brought up today. And moving from higher intensity uses to lower intensity uses. So there's two sides of it that we have to look at. Number one, when we look at zoning things for peoples based on requests, so for example, you know, a request to have C one instead of agricultural. It's existing C one, not a big deal. Um, the request to have the C three uh commercial up along um County Road nine. That would, if it, if we're going to look at trying to not have high intensity uses next to residential. Zoning a C three property immediately adjacent to residential would kind of fly in the face of that in that portion. Um, the industrial portion that's been brought up while this neighborhood has not been built, the site plan has been approved for this higher neighborhood. And that is immediately adjacent to the industrial. Um, so that would fly in the face of that. Um, the C three that's proposed on the Timming property is immediately adjacent to residential. Um, which would also fly in the face of having lower intensity uses next to residential. Um, we do also have the other C three below that, that is kind of on the main intersection, but then again, um, and then as you come down Sixth Street. Um, we have the C three immediately south of Cleveland, but that is again, that's up against C two downtown commercial. That's up against primarily the um C four, or sorry, R four downtown neighborhoods, which is still residential, but it's a higher density residential. So that wouldn't be able to be an issue. But then we start to get down by Jefferson. We have all the C three, again, it is along highway or the frontage road or Sixth Street. But again, we have high intensity C three use immediately adjacent to low, low and low-density residential. Which again flies in the face of that. And then you continue that down, we have the C three at the very south portion of town. We have this entire section here that's zoned C three, which is again, a high intensity use immediately adjacent to residential. Um, and so from my perspective, I would agree with statements that are made, we should not be making decisions based on one individual property. But if we are going to be looking at trying to actually have a setup where we have lower intensity uses that gradually work their way up to higher intensity uses. We should really look at doing that across the board. Um, because we've got a lot of areas where we don't have that. We've got high intensity uses immediately at next to residential or low-density residential, which is a problem. So it's the industrial and then kind of our C three. But then it becomes a question of if we don't do those there, where do we put those? The other question is if we're going to look at adjusting our C three to be more consistent on that standpoint, what effect is that going to have on existing uses on those properties? And that's the question I don't know the answer to. Um, so obviously, when you look at the quarter on Cleveland Avenue, we've got a bunch of gas stations and drive-throughs. Those are obviously going to be affected by changing from a C three. Um, I don't know, as you kind of go down um Sixth Street. I don't know what uses we have in there, if they would be affected. I know most uses within C three are also allowed within C one, which would be that lower use. But some notable exceptions are um drive-throughs. I believe gas stations would fall under the C threes as well, would not be approved in C one. And then like hotels, things like that. Marijuana is another one that was brought up tonight is also. But outside of those, I don't know if any of the use is existing. Um, so I think we need to look at that. Um. The other area I had was with the Timming property, um, the request by the Boys and Girls Club. I don't think he specified what they would like to see it zoned as. Okay, maybe he did say C one. I don't, I, I'm.
No, he did not specify.
Okay, I don't think he specified a zoning that he wanted it done as, just he had concerns that if it was zoned as C three, they may not be able to do some of the uses that they wanted to do on that property. Um, again, that does the question mark there of should we have C three immediately adjacent to a low um density residential? Um, my concern is that if we're going to try and have it spaced out. This would be the time to do it, not wait until, well, let's do it later. Because as we keep things as whether they're C three or industrial, we're going to get more and more uses on those that once we try to change it, it's going to be problematic. Now, I don't know what we currently have existing uses in the industrial area up north. Um, so I don't know if we have a bunch of uses in there that would be made non-conforming if we were to change that to light industrial. Um, so that would be a question that I would want to have an answer to. Um, I appreciate the concerns that were brought up by the residents with um, you know, just the what can be put in place in high, high-intensity industrial and their concerns around the health. Um, especially with it being that close to residential, that is a concern. But then the question is if we're not gonna, it's where it comes to, we have to, we have to stagger things. If we don't stagger things and start doing that. We're going to constantly run across this problem because we'll allow residential to be zoned alongside heavier uses. So those are my concerns at the portion, and I think that we need to talk to property owners, because if we're talking about changing things from like industrial to light industrial, we obviously need to let property owners who wouldn't necessarily have come because they are like, oh, my property's not changing. Um, so I don't think it's something that should be changed today. But I think that if we need to discuss whether or not we think that should be done, and if that's the case, we need to give opportunity for those property owners to um, weigh in on that. And I think that we do need to take seriously the concerns that have been brought up by the community.
Thank you. Trusty Daily?
Trying to group and organize my thoughts, because there's many. Um, the first thing, my laptop died at the most amazing thing.
Oh, no.
But luckily I read the the land use code many times. Not going to be able to quote it perfectly like I did before, but that was also good timing. So one thing that I am using as a tool right now is our comprehensive plan map. Um, available in comprehensive map, because it shows kind of uh expected outcomes or growth or, you know, what would could be expected um in the future. Uh, and a lot of those are designed very specifically based off of many inputs. And so the inputs I want to acknowledge right now came up in many comments and questions. And there was questions about why or where, what could happen. So some of those questions were relating to trails. Um, so within the comprehensive map, a comprehensive plan, a map on page fourteen, um, there is likely and designated trail routes that are strategically placed for the purpose of um purpose and area to connect to regional trails from Laramore County, for example. So it kind of shows what that path would likely be um in the future. So when we have questions of, do you think this, this place would likely have a trail in the future or not? Um, I could not completely definitively say no, but I could say it wouldn't make sense that it would based on where regional trails are and what our plans probably would be to connect them. In two thousand twenty-four, this, this board has uh committed to do a strategic plan for parks and trails and open spaces and all those, the fun recreation items. So that was also a question of whether or not that's happening. We've committed to make that happen next year. Okay, I wanted to answer that question. The other thing is why is industrial properties where it is? Um, and why within our map is it very, very clear that it's going in that same direction? It's because it's the railroad. So that makes sense for industrial properties to have access and use to or a connection to a railroad potentially. And then those aren't necessarily suitable properties for homes, for example. And the majority of the properties that go along there in the current industrial area are also in the hundred-year floodplain. That's another consideration, why that's designated that way. Um, and then the other major questions I heard that came up um, that I would say would be beneficial to reference to the comprehensive plan is the growth area. So right now, we're looking at a zoning map, obviously, of only what is Wellington now. But what is expected to happen over the Wellington of the future? Um, and part of a specific property that was mentioned, that has very clear um direction and what's kind of expected in the future, is the C three properties that go along the frontage road. So um, in that, based on our comprehensive plan, it's expected to continue because it's right along the frontage road. Um, and I want to relate that to a couple of questions regarding transitions or step-ups from density and uses. So what looks alarming on your map when you look at the pictures is purple backed up against yellow. So low-density residential touching high-traffic-based um mixed-use commercial. So what we have to think about in this transition is we're not transitioning from lo- low-density to medium-density to C one, to C three. Right here, what we're separating in this transition period, this transition area is really um crammed in. Because on one side, the C three is essentially doing the work of all the step-ups. Because on one side is a freeway. On the other side is residential. So how do you make that gap? You can't step up a million ways. What you do is you put the high-traffic commercial along the frontage road, which is our highest traffic-capable road. So when we're looking along the frontage road, along the freeway, it makes absolute, absolute sense that that step-up is so significant, because it's separating a freeway from low-density housing. So that makes sense to me. And so talking about that specific property that we're talking about, that's currently public. Within our comprehensive plan, it's expected that that C three or that commercial um, area will likely grow along the freeway and along the frontage road. That makes absolute sense. There's no reason why I would deny that. I wouldn't imagine that we would go put um large acreage um, residential properties right up against the frontage road ever in the future. I think that path is going to continue that way. So we have to think about the future uses of what's potential there. What I do want to know and other people brought up earlier is the retention pond's not going away. It is required to be there, is required for that development. So no worries about that. And the cool thing about C three is that recreation indoor and outdoor is permitted in C three. So the idea of having a softball field or a a trail that I haven't, I have no reason why I would ever go there. But if a trail did occur there, that's, you know, those are permitted uses. So outdoor recreation, indoor recreation are all allowed there. Whether it be a good use of the land that's underwater some of the time, I'm not going to answer that question. But for the concerns that came up, I wanted to answer that. Okay. Um, so that's a big step between residential C three to freeway. I wanted to acknowledge that I don't think any of those changes need to occur. The property for Boys and Girls Club, the Timmy property, it makes sense that you could make a good argument that it would be C one, which would accommodate childcare uses and also public and civic uses, which I think would apply to all the uses that have been, you know, very vaguely mentioned, but definitely open up a lot more opportunities for use of that property. If you look at that property, it is adjacent to residential. So a step up from that would make sense that it would go C one, C three. Also, it has crossed the street from school, but most closely to that is other C one properties on the same road. So it is the closest to C one properties currently. Um, I think it makes a very good argument that we could do a step up there, C one. I don't know if they owe the north or south property on this one.
Yeah, the Boys and Girls Club and the town jointly own the property closest to the residential.
Okay, so in my mind, it could, it could make very good sense that it would be C one in the south property and then C three in the north property as it's transitioning up to light industrial. I think that would be an easy argument to make, that that's a good step-up process, and also accommodate the needs and be adjacent to other C one properties and residential low-density. So that would be my recommendation for the, for the Timmy property is to be C one from Mary ma- maintain that north property, C three. Okay, um, the other step-up concerns that Trusty Gator brought up that I also share is the industrial backing up against low-density um, residential that we see in the very north of Wellington currently in our map. Here. Um, having those back-to-back, I know that there's specific setbacks for specific uses that would uh separate those, but. Uh, separate those, but that is the most extreme step transition that we have in our entire map, in my opinion. Um, and it matches a lot of the recommendations and concerns of the public that we've seen. I would like to explore if it's possible to either. For the properties that are west of the road. If this could be light industrial potentially and then going into industrial, I understand why those areas industrial, like I mentioned, railroad floodplain. There are so many reasons why that area is some type of industrial. But could we do a easier or? More comfortable step up from the low density, low density to potentially light industrial to industrial? I'm just gonna throw that question out, I don't know the answer to that. Um, and I think those lots expand, I don't, I don't know. So I don't know which lots are separate. Um, regarding. Uh, County Road nine and sixty-eight. Um. I think C three for that property is not appropriate. As it is does, uh, is across the street and adjacent to low density residential. I am, I feel very comforted that they have conditional use already applied to that property for the existing business use. Meaning that that property can maintain that business use forever. So in no way is that taking away that capability, but let's say they were to sell that property in a month. Would the C three uses be appropriate backed up against and across the street from residential uses? No. So I would, I'm, I'm, this is the forward thinking, future planning, that that is too big of a step or transition to be appropriate. It's across the street from other C one properties, that makes sense. So, uh, keeping it as C one is great, knowing that there's conditional use granted for that land for its current use and business needs even better. Um, the Padilla, Padilla property requesting C one, that's agriculture, correct? Um, that's across the street from C one. That's a easy, if they want that and it's right across the street from C one and it's boundaries and separating C one from C three to, um. To medium density, that's a, that's a no brainer right there, that makes complete sense that that would be permitted. Uh, I'm looking at my list. Um, and then I hope the whole comp and everything came back to the what I was gonna bring up earlier for non-conforming uses. And the protections within C three for religious uses and residential uses. So I, I repeat that over and over again because it gets quote back to us wrong all the time. But it was something that was really important to people when they came and talked to us and we implemented it immediately into the land use code to protect regu- residential uses and religious. Um, land uses downtown to make sure that those could always be what they want to be. Rather, uh, whether it's residential or religious. So I don't want that to be wrong, so if anybody tells you otherwise, they're wrong. Um, but it's in the land use code and specifically protected. Um, that scares, that's used to scare people a lot that were like gonna burn down a church and then they can never build it back. That's a horrific vision, but I think that's what's being used to scare people. So I don't want you to be scared about that. Also, I don't want any churches burned down, that was. Side note, I felt like I was being really inconsiderate by saying something like that. Um. That's, those are my notes. That's what I got, I can give very specific responses and zoning. Suggestions for every property in question that's come before us today. If we're going to catalog that in a moment, I'll just, that'll just be my statement.
Thank you. Trustee Mason.
Oh, boy. Um, that's, can we get some clarif- clarification from Mr. Meyer as far as what he would like to see the timid property zoned as?
I don't see why not, I think that'd be a wonderful idea. Apologize, it wasn't better for him. What I, what I would like to see is if, and again, this is how I'm interpreting what I read today. Um, Boys and Girls Club and practical purposes is a school. In the C three zoning, the school is not allowed. The colleges, technical school is, but school is not. If the.
Neither is.
That use could be permitted in the C three zoning, I'm, we're good. That's all I'm really ultimately asking for is to allow school as a permitted use within the C three zone and then. Fine. That protects, protects the potential of a future club there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that information.
Appreciate that, sir. Um, for the two properties in question that the planning commission wasn't able to review. Uh, thirty-five thirty Garfield Avenue, I think that was Mr. Padilla's property. Uh, I would agree that, uh, keeping that as C one rather than agriculture makes sense, there are adjacent properties there. And considering the past use that, that only makes sense. Uh, for thirty-one forty-three East County Road sixty-four, that's the one that has the approved conditional use. Uh, when we compare that to the surroundings, I. You know, we've currently got it as recommended as C one, but considering the land use codes, which just specifically mentions. The C three district should integrate various commercial and multifamily uses while transitioning from the highway to adjacent lower density neighborhoods. Well, that property is not even close to the highway. So I believe that should be C one considering the conditionals use. And if the landowner would like to come and, you know, apply with us to have that changed at some point in the future, we can certainly look at that, so. Um. I do have some concerns about the drainage pond stuff, and I apologize for the audience because this is probably gonna get pretty confusing pretty quick, so. Um, I am not sure that I agree that changing public drainage ponds listed on map A, that's in the packet, which you guys probably can't see right now. Uh. To be zoned the same as their adjacency, I, trying to follow some of the logic there, if we're considering adjacency, then I do have some questions. Uh, one would be, uh, item A twenty-six. And again, that's on a map that the public would have to see in the packet, but. Uh, item A twenty-six is current, uh, is recommended to be, uh, zoned as public, but I would say in terms of adjacency, shouldn't it actually be zoned then R two? Uh, there's real no public access to that particular detention pond, uh, as that one actually does hold water pretty frequently and it's kind of marshy and full of grass. Uh, tall grass as far as that goes, so, uh, whereas some of these properties. Some of these other properties that are recommended to be changed actually do have some pub- public access. So for example, uh, trustee Gator had rightly pointed out properties A four and properties A five earlier were listed as future trail possibility. Uh, why would we change those from public to R two and R three if we want to use them for trails in the future? That doesn't make sense to me. Um, also, I regularly, regularly see residents throwing frisbees to their dogs on property A eighteen. Uh, if it was me, I would have considered that to be both open sa- open space and drainage. There is in fact no signage on that track that suggests that. Uh, uh, residents should stay out of that area and in fact, it's, that's one of those detention ponds in town, which is pretty much dry all the time. So, you know, if folks are out there throwing frisbees and that sort of thing, I would call that open space and drainage and that should be zoned public. So if we're gonna apply this same logic to all of this stuff. I would also say the same would apply to property A twenty because it's usually a bunch of dirt bikes out there, that's our side. And I would also say that for property A twenty-eight, now that's track def, that's the one I, I don't live on that side, but I'm guessing when the pond is, isn't full of water. And as to, uh, Ms. Brewer's point when she was here earlier. Uh. I'm sure that people are using that probably to throw frisbees to their dogs when it's not full of water. So I suppose the overall point I'm trying to make is that it's, I, I would not be incredibly comfortable with changing the drainage property considerations from map A. And just to make this real easy as far as my views goes, I would like to see the original planning commission draft map adopted. Cody, that was the one from December, I believe. Plus, map B's changes as well as item A sixteen. That one I believe is private property, A thirty and A thirty-one from map A. As those seem to be in the same spirit as the rest of map B. Uh, the drainage properties though, I think are well classified under public zoning and I'm not sure we should change those. Yeah, so essentially I would be recommending that we pass the original draft map. And not the PC considerations map. The PC considerations map is the one that includes the changes from, uh, map A and map B. That's this map. Okay, so I would say, in my opinion, I want to see the original PC draft map adopted plus items from map B. As well as item A sixteen, that's private property, I believe. And A thirty and A thirty-one from map A also. Because I think those are kind of in line with what map B is trying to pursue.
Trustee Mason, what were your thoughts on the specific requests made by property owners about their specific properties being changed? Because those weren't on the, I don't know if those were on the original planning commission map.
Yeah, that was the ones that I mentioned just at the beginning of this, I said that thirty-five thirty Garfield Avenue, that was Mr. Padilla's property, I do agree with keeping that as C one. Uh, considering the past use, uh, thirty-one forty-three East County Road sixty-four, I would not agree with changing that to C three. Considering its location, it would not in fact, in the past have ever been picked to be C three considering its location. So, uh, considering the approved conditional use, I think it makes sense that that remain C one.
Yeah.
As far as the Boys and Girls Club request goes. Um, I'd be fine with seeing that as, well, well, I think the bigger issue was that. Unless we can somehow word in that they can have a school, whether it's C three or C one.
It'd have to be, we'd have to be P public.
Should also be noted that, uh, the, the town of Wellington jointly owns that property with.
It can technically be changed.
And so there, no use can be made of that property really without further considerably more work on the behalf of the town of Wellington. Um, be, it is, we're fifty fifty owners of that lot. And so just to keep that in mind as you're discussing what the Boys and Girls Club may or may not want to do with that. There's a lot of discussions that we need to have, the, the, the town needs to have with Boys and Girls Club, potentially with, um, the church that owns the other parcel that it joins that. I mean, the past had been considered, there would be some sort of joint use among the three. So I think, um, before any decision is made about how to zone that something different perhaps, um.
Taken into consideration, the joint ownership.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. It's obvious that the planning commission spent an extensive amount of time building their recommendations and putting a lot of thought. Um. I would say that staff did the same, they did a great job and their presentation has been very thorough this evening. Also, I really think that the, uh, public hearing portion this evening provided some very thoughtful and respectful comment. Um, I agree and share and value the arguments expressed by my fellow board members this evening. Um, I would say that my thoughts, um, align mostly with trustee Wiegand and trustee Mason. And I do have some concerns and I would agree with being forward thinking about how we think about those public space pieces. After we went through the development of the community park, we were able to. Use some innovative thinking to repurpose that drainage pond and turn it into a dog park. So I think that, um. There's a lot of information to be taken into consideration this evening. Um, but I don't have any additional questions for staff or need any additional clarification from fellow board members.
Thank you. Okay, when it comes to the Tignan property, um, I say we need, we need further. Further discussion there before we move forward with changing any zoning whatsoever. Um, I don't believe that C three fits at that sixty-four nine. Um, that would be out of place. Um, especially if you were to sell it, that would put those neighborhoods into a bind without a doubt. Um. When it comes to C three being zoned along the frontage road. Um, comprehensive plan or comprehensive plan lays that out. Clear as day, that's what's supposed to go there, up and down. Um, and then, um, the C, the one. What did the, uh, what did the parks say for the? C three section up by A and A storage, what, what did parks say for that? In our comprehensive plan, you have right there?
Yeah, I do.
What was their rec- did they have a trail recommended to go through there?
I gotta find it because it doesn't have all those. Right here, there's a trail that goes along County Road sixty-four, but like along the road.
There's one right there by the railroad tracks in Cleveland.
Yep.
Yes, okay. We can change that anytime.
I mean, this isn't, this isn't where the trails are gonna go, but it's where it makes sense.
Okay. Um. I don't. Yeah, I don't think I had anything further to think about or discuss there that hasn't already been said. Um. Oh, yeah, Padilla, definitely. Um, as requested by him. Uh, keep that, that was C one. Um, instead of agriculture, yes. That makes sense. Um. Yeah, that would, that was, uh, that's where I'm at.
On your, grab your microphone, please, thank you.
On your comprehensive plan, when you're looking at that intersection of County Road sixty-four that you were just discussing, what is at that corner? Be right where, what is the identified for future planning?
It says, uh, residential load, uh, load.
To the west, northwest. Northwest on that County Road sixty-fourth corner.
Commercial.
So that was the reason that it was suggested is because in our future planning, that corner over there is projected as commercial.
On the adjacent corner.
Yep.
Not up against residential.
No, because that other, that following corner right there to the southwest, yeah.
Within this, this map too, it doesn't distinguish commercial, one, two, or. You know, it doesn't say which zoning because it's not related to zoning, it's related more to use. Um, so it doesn't say C one versus C three. It just says that around a corridor of major streets, you would expect commercial. So that's more of what it's in line with, but it doesn't say C three. Which is usually related to or transitioning to highways or those kind of high traffic kind of things.
What was the other thing you had?
Um, just so I would want to ask that we make sure that if we can verify the same wording we did for C two. And religious land use, if there's a way to protect that C one section of that block, if that's possible?
Not, not, not what we're doing right now, it's not.
So they won't have.
She's talking about, because that would be land use.
So we could do a separate, we could bring something separate back if we wanted to add similar protection.
We just can't do it.
C one, it would be separate from the zoning conversation though.
Got it, but we could bring it back to make sure that we could protect those property, residential property owners, like what we did in the C two and residential.
We just have to follow the land use code change process, so that would go through stat, we'd work with staff that would go through, and, and the board can initiate that process. Um, and then we go through the planning commission and then it would come back to the board for approval if we wanted to do that, that is an option.
Because I know we did it for the C two and religious, but we didn't do it for C one. So, and that's what that block is of that mix, that's what I'm kind of concerned about, I just want to make sure they have protections put in place.
It's outside of downtown.
The C two zoning was specifically for downtown Cleveland corridor.
Um. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, could we potentially take a recess for about five minutes for us to regroup as staff and, and put our heads together about where, where we think you guys are going and, and then we can report back?
Yeah, absolutely, I would love a recess anyways.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twenty-third, we're meeting back in session time being nine thirty-six PM. At this time, I would like a motion for an executive session. For advice on the zoning district map.
A second.
Hold on, I, I'll, I'll read a, a prepared motion. Uh, this executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant. This executive session for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to section twenty-four six four oh two four B CRS regarding. The adoption of the land use code. Or excuse me, the, the land use map as required by CRS twenty-four six four oh two two D point five two A and two E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded and the record will be preserved for ninety days through June twenty-six twenty twenty-three.
Make it a motion or. Dan, or Dan just read it. I haven't got anybody make it yet. Okay, second.
Second.
All right, make it a roll call.
Certainly, Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
No.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right, so at this time we are going to an executive session. So everybody that's in this room now that is not on the board will please have to leave for the time being.
Question, could we possibly just go into the library with the staff to have the executive session or?
Need to record it and we need to have.
Can we bring a recorder with us? That way we're not pumping people out of the room and then back in.
I guess I could record it on my phone. We need to be able to bring in Trusty Mc, Mayor Pro Tem McDonald as well.
Yeah, so if everybody in this room could please leave the room and then we'll bring this meeting back. Time being nine fifty PM. Yes, Trusty Gator.
So I, I would like to make a motion. I'll explain the motion in a second. I would also like to ask if Mr. Sapienza can explain as appropriate some concerns. With some of the ideas that were brought up by the members of public as well as thoughts of the board about rezoning industrial area. If you can explain some of the ongoing concerns as appropriate, Mr. Sapienza, and then I'd like to explain a motion and then make a motion.
In, in very broad terms, Trusty Gator. We discussed. Rezoning properties and potential legal issues surrounding rezoning properties. And more specifically, the, the proper criteria that the board may use in certain decision-making processes. And potential liability related to that. My recommendation with regard to the industrial property there was to not. Rezone that at this time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sapienza for doing that. The motion I'd like to make, we're at nine fifty-one right now. Our time is ten o'clock and then we can do two fifteen-minute extensions to ten thirty. We do have other items. I think that there were some adjustments separate from that portion that were requested by the board. I don't think that we can hash those out to have a good clean motion within fifteen minutes. So I would like to move that we postpone this. To our April fifteenth board meet or April eleventh. Board of Trustees meeting so that we can make sure that staff has clearly defined all the other areas where the board is making adjustment or recommendations to the map. We can have that cleaned up and then we can still finish up our agenda for this evening. So I'd like to move that we postpone the. Ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-three in ordinance of the town of Wellington, Colorado, amending the official zoning map of the town to our April eleventh. Board of Trustees meeting.
A second.
Make it a roll call, please.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor. Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. We will now close. Our regular meeting and open the Liquor License Authority Board. Time being nine fifty-four PM. May I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Trusty Gator.
Here.
Trusty Daly.
Present.
Trusty Mason.
Here.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
First item on the Liquor License Authority agenda is an application for modification of the premise of the Wellington Manor Liquor License. Mr. Moose.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I'm Ethan Moose. I'm the town clerk. I'll be presenting the Liquor License Authority items to you this evening. The first item is an application by KLC, excuse me, KLC two LLC doing business as Wellington Manor. They've submitted an application to modify the premises of their current establishment, which is located at. Through thirty-nine twenty-two Cleveland Avenue. The current liquor license that they have will expire on August the ninth of this year. Basically, what they're, what they have done is acquired additional property in the vicinity of their establishment and they're requesting to expand the premises. Of their current liquor borders to include that property. They've included in their application, which you'll find in your packets, the appropriate paperwork for the application as well as the payments. And you can see in the application, or excuse me, in the packet as well, the proposed outline for the border of their. Modification of premises. With that said. This item is for you. I'm happy to answer any questions before we proceed. Through this, through the rest of this item.
Thank you. Trusty Gator.
The only question I have, and I believe I understand, just want to make sure I have it correct. So they, they will be fencing the area around that new property. Is that correct? And having a boundary there? Okay.
Yes, chain link fence.
Perfect, thank you. That was my only question.
The applicants are here if you have questions.
Okay.
Trusty Teets.
The only question I have that I have highlighted here is it says by Andrew, Andrew Tofuri. I apologize if I'm butchering his last name. It says all noise is shut down by ten PM. Can we set noise ordinance in an agreement? It's eleven. Okay, I just wanted to verify that really quick.
I, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, Trusty Teets, but I could certainly get you an answer.
Got it. Well, I think it was pretty much answered. Thank you.
Trusty Wiegand. No questions. Trusty Mason.
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tem.
No questions.
Trusty Daly.
No questions, but excited for additional investment and opportunities in our town. Looks like a great application. So I appreciate all the components being completed. Thanks.
I have no questions either, in case anybody was wondering. Now it's time for public comment on this agenda item.
Hi, Don Peacock. And I just wanted to throw my support behind this. I think it's a wonderful addition to the town. Having meeting spaces or gathering spaces, additional gathering spaces is, is great. And for those who do enjoy a cocktail or two, it's just another. Location to be able to do it and for weddings and gatherings, I'm just, I'm just really excited. So yay.
Troy Hammond, six eight three six McClellan, Chamber Chair, representing the beauty renewed in Manor tonight as well. They got a great plan expanding this area. It's include venues of weddings, bar mitzvahs, parties, birthday parties, not just liquor. But they have to have that option just for grownups to do this kind of thing. It's going to be class act. So I'm hoping that we get a good support from all of you on that and then you're going to just see good things happening. It's going to be a lot of fun. So, thank you for that. Thank you.
Lisa Chollet, don't do it. Just kidding. Actually, I just kind of want to echo what. Former Mayor Hammond said about having a space for families to have events. Like, you know, college graduations and things like that so that we don't have to travel down to other municipalities to spend our money. So I think both Lisa and Chrissy have proven their dedication and investment to our town. And they've been very responsible people and so I'm excited to see what they're going to do with this event space and I hope that you'll approve their expansion.
Thank you. No more further comment. Make it a motion to approve.
I will make a motion that we approve the modification of premises for KLC two LLC doing business as Wellington Manor.
A second.
Make it a roll call, please.
Certainly, Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand.
Yes.
Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an application for the modification of premise for the Come and Go License, Mr. Moose.
I'm just going to present that item from my chair over here.
So real quickly, we are at ten o'clock, so I'd like to motion that we continue our meeting for fifteen minutes to ten fifteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the second item on the Liquor Licensing Authority agenda for this evening is the expansion. Again, a modification of premises for the Come and Go that is located on property eight one five zero sixth street. They're requesting the addition of a approximately three foot square location. In their premises to be able to sell wine is immediately adjacent from the location where they're currently approved to sell beer. And this, this request is in accordance with the previous, the recent approval by Colorado State. For local grocery stores and similar establishments to sell wine. You can see the location of, in their di, in the diagrams included in the packet of location where they would like to include this. This area and all paperwork per state statute requirements is included in their application. Happy to take any questions regarding this issue.
Any question or comments from the board? Any comments from the public on this agenda item? Make it a motion to approve.
I move to approve the modification of premises for Come and Go LC doing businesses, Come and Go number nine three four.
All second.
Make it a roll call, please.
Certainly, Trusty Daly.
Yes.
Trusty Mason.
Yes.
Trusty Gator.
Yes.
Trusty Teets.
Yes.
Trusty Wiegand.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem McDonald.
Yes.
Mayor Shosse.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, on to reports. Mr. Sapienza.
Do we need to exit our liquor license board?
Oh, yeah. It wasn't, it, it, sorry, you know, this stuff doesn't happen all the time. I now close our liquor. Licensing Authority meeting, time being ten oh two PM. All right, back to our regular meeting. Town reports, Mr. Sapienza.
Very briefly regarding municipal court. Last year due to a clerical error, a fortuitous clerical error on behalf of Limerick County Sheriff's Office. One of our tickets that should have come to municipal court in the town of Wellington actually went to the city of Fort Collins Municipal Court. Which normally would be a bit of a crisis, but the fortuitous part of that is that ticket connected the town of Wellington's municipal court with Fort Collins. Restorative Justice Program. Two minors from the town of Wellington were able to participate in this program that's funded through the city of Fort Collins and Limerick County. Specific for minors for shoplifting offenses. The two, two minors participated in the program, involved therapy, involved meetings with their parents, a rather long process. And it ended in a really positive result for those two offenders. So just one of those, one of those things, it's new for the town of Wellington. Where we've now connected with the restorative justice programs in, in Fort Collins and through Limerick County District Attorney's Office. To participate, participate or have defendants participate in more of those programs. So just a great example of town of Wellington's municipal court and other services kind of merging and, and then being able to take advantage of the, the larger community. So, wanted to share that.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia.
So Megan and Bob were here and I didn't know how long things were going to go, so I went on ahead and sent them home. Because they were going to talk about the water quality report that is in your packet. So this document will be sent out with utility bills and we wanted to get that in front of you before, before it got out to the public. And, and it'll be, you know, included in your electronic bills, things like that. So Megan will be sending an email out to the trustees to provide a really good overview of the process, what happened and why we're here. In the document that was in your packet, it talks about some violations that we've had. And the violations aren't, aren't related to water quality. The violations are related to reporting. We've had some turnover in staff, things have happened where, you know, maybe we didn't provide the reporting on time like we needed to. Which that has been taken care of. Megan and, and Bob are, are well aware of what needs to happen. And, and are working with their managers and supervisors to make sure we don't have any problems like this again. But because it was reported, it is something we have to provide to our residents. We, transparency is paramount. But we are concerned that there will be, you know, someone will see this and think, oh, there's something wrong with our water. There's nothing wrong with the water. The, the issues were strictly related to the reporting, the reporting requirements where we missed a couple dates. So just wanted to give you, Megan, Megan will give you a full, full. Download of it all in an email either tonight or tomorrow. But wanted to make sure we got this in front of you before it got sent out into the pack, into bills. So thank you.
Thank you. I'll see, so.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sergeant Matt Cherry, Limerick County Sheriff's Office. I will try to make this very brief, but I first want to apologize for my radio earlier.
It was your radio.
It was my radio.
I do it.
I'm wondering why I'm hearing an encrypted radio that sounds very similar to my dispatcher near me. I'm like, what is going on? And apparently my earpiece came disconnected and it started talking to the speaker. So I apologize for that. Somebody else has a radio in here. It's weird. Really, really quick, because I don't want to take a bunch of your time. I did want to talk about page ninety-nine of your packet. The February two thousand twenty-three calls for service. There are some pretty sizable increases in various things. I did address the municipal code violations. An increase of forty-four hundred percent. And that was just because we changed how we were calling out parking violations. If I, if I got on the radio and says I'll be out with this vehicle, my dispatcher would type it in as a traffic stop. So we started changing that so that we can more accurately catch how often we're, we're, we're dealing with some of these things. And it doesn't, not just parking violations, it could be anything that is a municipal code violation. Looking at mental health calls, three for the month of February, which is pretty darn good, but it's an eight hundred percent increase over. Previous months, nothing to earth shattering there. We contacted some individual over at the Loaf and Jug who was having a crisis. We helped that individual and then to, two calls at the same address. Two separate, two separate days and we got that person the help that they needed. Looking at sex offenses, we had five reported in the, the month of February. That's a four hundred percent increase. These were all calls related to juveniles. A juvenile sex offense that happened in two thousand twenty-two. Some unwanted filming, some unwanted touching, some, some family issues. And a safe to tell, nothing that you would look at and think there's something going on in the town. These are, these are random things completely unrelated to each other. Looking at some weapons offenses, we did have a five hundred percent increase, which is two weapons offenses in February. Juvenile waving around a, a pellet gun that looked real. He got a very large presence of law enforcement officers from Wellington and outside of Wellington. But we released him. But we released him to his parents that were not very happy. And then we had a reported stabbing over at the Come and Go, but it turned out to be self-inflicted, and he had some mental health issues as well. Real quick, traffic, nothing, well, you're going to start seeing more citations being written, but you'll notice that traffic stops were down. We're just kind of reprioritizing a little bit the types of traffic stops that we're doing. If I left here right now, I could stop every car, you know, that drove past me from no license, no front license plate to no turn signal to this and that. We're just looking for the most serious offenders and stopping those and, and dealing with those as best we can. That is all I have. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a quick question online here. Thank you.
Who is that?
About parking violations and traffic stops. Out of curiosity, have you identified or will you be looking into further people that are parking in the turn lane in front of the post office? It impedes the line of sight quite a bit, and it's also pretty dangerous because you can't make a right-hand turn there safely sometimes.
You even see in my truck there?
I do it too.
Are you naughty? That is so naughty, you guys.
It's, I mean, it's parking.
Yes, ma'am. We've recognized that this is an issue. We do get complaints about it. This is, this has been something that the, the citizens, citizens of Wellington do quite frequently. I think that it's probably going to have to be one of those things where we put some signage up or we paint the curb, paint a red, so that we can address that. There, there are slew of of parking issues throughout Wellington that I drive by and I go, I got to take care of that from cars parked the wrong direction to people parking too close to fire hydrants, people parking too close to stop signs within the Cleveland corridor, if you really want to call it that, because it, it is super, super dangerous. So I have been in contact with the town just as far as, hey, can we buy a lot of red paint? So we can start touching things up and hopefully solving some of these issues. So, but the, the parking in front of the post office is something that we've looked at. We've already, we've made some traffic stops or traffic contacts there. We haven't written any tickets because obviously this has been an ongoing issue. Education is our first step.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
So our mayor has been educated. Um, I just have one simple thing, and that is to say that I, not being a parent of a kiddo going to our middle school, high school here, I want to say that the acknowledgement of your increased presence at the middle school, high school over the last, I'd say, week has been noticed by all of our community. I don't know if you see the pages, but you guys have been greatly thanked as well. I want to say thank you, not as I have a child that attends that school right now, but for all of the parents that are not sitting here right now, but are still saying thank you for that increased presence at our schools during a time like this. So thank you so much.
We're, we're proud to do it.
My question was actually if you could give us a quick summary of the response of the facts. I've been hearing of some, some strange things that don't quite match the reports I've received of the incident or the reported incident from Wellington Middle High School this last week.
We've had a couple of incidents with the last week. One was of a student escorting a friend of his who happened to be an adult. Eighteen, I think eighteen, nineteen years of age escorting him into the school. And there were rumors about another student seeing this particular adult with a handgun and his waistband. Those were discounted. Our investigators did interviews with those that were involved, and the person that said, oh, yeah, I, I saw this. They, they couldn't definitively say. And the second person who was a witness, the video that we saw that, that that person wasn't even in the area when this particular individual was walking through. Our investigators did contact and identify this, this young man down in Loveland. He is not associated with this area. And unfortunately, as much as, you know, I like to say, yeah, we, we can charge this individual for, for really stirring our emotions here in town and frightening our parents with, you know, sounds of, you know, somebody that's unwanted coming into our school and, and being in possession of a firearm. Unfortunately, there's, there's a thing called probable cause, and unfortunately, we just didn't have probable cause to actually charge him with anything. But he was contacted, as, as was the young man who was uncooperative and and uncooperative, uncooperative with our investigators. He was the one that brought this other individual in. The school has, has been dealing with him as well. There was a second safe to tell on Sunday where someone was reportedly on social media saying that he was going to come and shoot at the school. That was quickly identified, and that day Deputy Remington, who was off duty, she put her uniform on, and a Wellington deputy, they, they both went and contacted him, determined that he had no access to actual firearms. He did have a, what appeared to be a pellet gun that looked like a shotgun and a fake knife. Those were quickly taken away. His parents were super cooperative with us. And that information, and that information was not only provided to the school, but this individual had already been expelled from, for previous threats. So although these, all of these things were deemed not credible, not credible threats at this point, we still upped our, our presence. We wanted to make sure that everybody knew that we were there because although I'm not on social media, I hear the rumors about, hey, everybody's talking about this and talking about that, and I want to make sure the parents are reassured by seeing lots and lots of patrol cars and, and, and all three schools, not just Wellington Middle High School, but we were also walking through the schools and just trying to be the biggest presence that we can. So sometimes that makes people more nervous. Oh, my gosh, there must be a reason why there's six patrol cars in the parking lot. But I'd rather have a much larger presence than, you know, Deputy Remington standing in front of the school.
Yeah, thank you.
So sure. Anything else, any other questions?
Yeah, one quick one. SROs, especially with what's happened here recently. I know we're going to be looking at hopefully expanding on that.
Yeah. Are we going to have a? Border, we're at ten fifteen, so I, I propose another fifteen-minute extension to ten thirty.
Okay, and this will just be real quick.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Someone on a second then?
Second.
Okay.
Is that going to cause a delay or harder to get a more SROs out there?
Is this type of, I'm sorry, is your question is?
My question is going to delay getting, if we wanted to get another SRO, and if we delay it too long, is it going to make it go even longer? Sorry.
Well, the
Just so we got a timeframe.
The, the public is, is kind of finicky just as far as when they want law enforcement and when they don't want law enforcement. You know, it's usually if a law enforcement officer makes a mistake, nobody wants us around. They wanted to, well, I won't go down that road, but but these types of events certainly get people's attention. They want us, more of us around. I would love to have, you know, five SROs in every school. They think the school district, I think, is, is kind of put their foot down as far as how many that they want in the middle high school. But of course, as you recall, they were also talking about, well, we need more data. We need more information to be able to substantiate it.
They haven't come to you lately.
They have not come to me, no. But I'm not in charge of the SRO program either. So we are having additional conversations just with Lieutenant Harkin. He oversees this, our unit to kind of talk about that. I know Ms. Chollet has, has also been a champion for adding a, a second SRO. I think that it's, it's warranted. I think that it's convincing the, the school district to, to allow it. Some deep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Four reports. Keep them short and sweet. Trustee Mason?
Uh, yeah, real quick, I, I made a slight error tonight. I did have in my notes that I wanted to thank the planning commission for the countless hours that they've put in on the zoning map. Really, we, we owe a lot to you guys and really appreciate the work that you're doing, so.
No report. Trustee Daly?
The word safe to tell have been brought up several times this evening. My favorite way to access safe to tell is through an app that you can download on your phone, and kids can too, and is a way to anonymously report concerns. They, it could be bullying all the way up to really significant problems that were alerted. The response to them is very quick, and it involves school administration and law enforcement and so many other resources. So if you don't have that app installed yet, please install it. There's also ways to call and things, but we, I know kids and I know me, I would do it through an app. It's very simple to use, and, you know, when in doubt, report it. See something, say something. So if you don't have that installed yet, please do and tell everyone.
Say it again.
Safe, number two, tell, safe to tell.
Thank you.
Yeah. My other updates are, I've been, information's been requested of me a lot lately regarding some of the statistics that I've reported regarding our high school students within our district within Colorado, an alarming and very scary survey results regarding suicide rates, attempted suicides of youth in our community. There recently have been some other statistics that were shared that differ greatly from the, the surveys that I reference. So since I've been asked this repeatedly, and I've been clarifying with those people and providing these resources, I wanted to let everybody know that the surveys I most frequently reference are from the Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. These are results from two thousand twenty-one. Trends are showing that all the alarming and concerning trends are actually getting worse for youth. Tonight, we heard overall suicide rates are improving. That's great. That is not the case for Pooter School District high school students, specifically those in vulnerable and oppressed units, including the queer community and, and other unfortunate groups that have higher rates of concern. The other survey that I reference frequently is the Pooter School District Engagement Surveys that are completed each week, each year, excuse me. And then just because I have kids at Boys and Girls Club, another one that I like to look at really to differentiate the experience of kids who attend Boys and Girls Club versus those who do not, you could reference their yearly report, and they just completed their most recent youth engagement survey as well to celebrate. They had a pizza party and laser tag. So it's, those are three really great resources that I would reference, including some support for Boys and Girls Club and the amazing work that they're doing in Wellington. Those are my updates.
Trustee Teets?
Ms. Garcia has sent out the invitations for the volunteer appreciation dinner for all of the board, so I'm really hoping to see a lot of our local volunteers that give so much be able to come out and enjoy dinner with all of us as trustees. So thank you for getting that done so quickly. I know you did it over the weekend, so that's, I appreciate it.
Trustee Wiegand?
No report.
No report. Mayor Proton is still on it. Oh, yeah. No report.
No report.
Uh, now adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Our meeting. There's so much.
Or putting these maps back. Oh, yeah.
For so long, but I'm feeling a lot better.
I know.
Today.
Did it go good?
It's not big enough. Yeah. Yeah. Because I also said, can we extend?
It's like, it's like.